Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Monty Priest is the pastor at New Church. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman White if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Let's pray together. Loving heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this time to come together. We thank you for our great city, Lord, and for the leadership you provided us. We feel so blessed, your amazing blessings in our lives, so many. We ask today that you would help us, give us the strength to face the challenges that are ahead. We pray whether that comes in the weather or the workplace or even in the thunder game tonight. Lord, we just thank you for your goodness and for your people here today, Lord. We love you and we love one another. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It is that time of year around City Hall when we are going through our budget process and so it is no coincidence that we are here today to draw positive attention to our budget staff. I'm going to ask Craig and Doug and everybody in the budget staff to come forward. We have a distinguished budget presentation award that has been presented to Oklahoma City. And if you have ever looked through the very voluminous budget that we present every year, you'll see that if you follow through the years how we have made it more reader-friendly and easier to access. And I think for all of those reasons and probably many more that I'm not aware of, we have been acknowledged again nationally with a distinguished budget presentation award. And I'm going to hand the mic over to Doug and let him tell you more about it.
Well, thank you, Mayor. This is the 28th year that the city has received this award from GFOA. We're very proud of this. This basically shows that we're following best practices for our budget presentation in terms of as a communications guide, policy guide, and as a way to present the budget to citizens and to decision-makers. One of the things I'm most proud of is we also received what's their special performance measures recognition this year. We're one of only 29 jurisdictions around the country to have received this. And that's because of our Leading for Results process, our performance measurement process that the council departments are all involved in, being able to communicate to citizens what they get for their money when they fund us through their budget. So we're very pleased with this. I'd like to recognize my staff here in the Office of Management and Budget. We've got Mike Strube, Lacy Kelly, Susan Cruda, Lindsay Delicio, Joanna McSpadden, Christian York, Erica Van Der Syphen, Derek Feig, and then Craig Freeman, Finance Director, is here as well with us. And so it's all a group effort and we're all, I'm very pleased with the work that our office does.
And we couldn't be more proud of you guys. So thanks. Let's show our appreciation. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations to both of you. Congratulations. Congratulations. And I'm going to ask the police chief to come up. Where is Chief City? Is he in here or is he outside? Here he comes. It is Police Appreciation Month. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as Bill and I get settled.
Whereas police officers make a valuable contribution to our community by serving and protecting our citizens, whereas the dedication and desire of Oklahoma City police officers to preserve a peaceful quality of life for all citizens is their foremost goal, whereas daily life-threatening hazards are an accepted requirement of the profession and most appreciated by a grateful public, whereas certain events within the month of May lend themselves towards the positive recognition of Oklahoma City law enforcement personnel. The city wishes to announce the following days of observance and the activities planned in recognition thereof. May 1st, National Law Day; May 2nd, Oklahoma City Police Department Awards Banquet; May 9th, Oklahoma City Police Department Memorial Services; May 9th, Oklahoma State Law Enforcement Memorial Services; May 11th through 17th is National Police Week; and May 15th will be National Police Officers Memorial Day. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of May 2014 as Police Appreciation Month in Oklahoma City in recognition of the outstanding performance, service, and competence exhibited by the Oklahoma City police officers.
Let's show our appreciation to the police chief and his 1,000 officers. You know, there's no shortage of numbers and data that comes out of the Police Department and FBI crime statistics, but it should be noted that from the improvement that this city made in 2013, for instance, our homicide rate dropped from 91 to 61. And that's an incredible achievement. And of course, the Police Department gets a lot of that credit as well as a lot of other organizations that are working to combat crime. And in the month of December, there were no murders in the city of Oklahoma City, the entire month. And we don't necessarily, we know how long that streak is because it's the most serious of subjects to talk about. You hate to minimalize it by talking about things like that, but it should be noted. And the police chief heads up a lot of those efforts. So police chief, congratulations and thank you for all those efforts.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to, I want to thank the community, obviously the men and women of the Oklahoma City Police Department. They're the reason that our numbers have looked better, at least over 2013. They did a tremendous job. I like to say this is a great city to be a police officer in because we really feel appreciated every day. This community really supports law enforcement and we couldn't do what we do without the citizens and the community and the council's support over the years. So just thank you very much.
Well, and the citizens have allowed us to hire additional officers each of the last two years. We expect to hire more this year. I know that's part of the success story here. In 2014, the numbers looked good again. So cross your fingers and let's continue to behave ourselves and show our police chief how much we appreciate him. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment. I was going to say this from items from council, but we've got lots of officers here right now and I thought I'd take advantage of it. Last week was a busy week with the Arts Festival and all sorts of activities, but Sunday was an absolutely extraordinary day with 27,000 people running in the marathon and then the Arts Festival closing. I don't know how the OCP did it. They were everywhere. They did such a fantastic job and we really want to thank you for all your efforts. It was just a terrific showing of what a great force we have.
And if a safe city is a city that people get out and enjoy, and I think that's what we saw this past weekend and we're seeing it this weekend too. It is also Building Safety Month and we have many members of our city staff here that are involved in this process. So I'll ask them to come forward. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the city of Oklahoma City's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and resilience in the build environment affecting our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. Whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of the dedicated members of the International Code Council who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. The council includes building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry. Whereas the international codes, the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most U.S. cities, counties, and states. These modern building codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, and earthquakes. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. Whereas building safety, maximizing resilience, minimizing risk, the theme for Building Safe Month 2014 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient structures, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, backyard safety, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry. Each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, Fire Prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of May 2014 as Building Safety Month in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation. When you're helping to lead a city, you love new development. You love to see dirt flying. You love to see the construction cranes. That's helping to build an economy well. A lot of those efforts fall on the shoulders of this group of people because with every new application to construct something in the city comes added responsibilities for our city staff. And David Adcock is the manager of our Development Center. We appreciate you guys very much.
Thank you. Yes, Building Safety Month has given us a chance to help raise awareness and understanding of the importance of building codes and to ensure the safety of those buildings as they're built. So we look forward to this month in promoting that.
Appreciate it. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thank you all. Great that you all have come down. Thanks for coming over. Good work. Great to see you. Thank you. Same here.
Thank you.
We're on item four of the council agenda. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. I'll look for a motion for item four A and B. First is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for April 22nd and four B will approve the journal for April 15th. All right, comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes and it passes unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, starting on page 10, under item 8E1, item C2645 Northwest 24th Street, who asks that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item D520 Southwest 28th Street, who asks that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then moving to page 12, under item 8I, since the agenda was posted on Friday, the plaintiff has appealed and so we'd ask that this item be stricken.
Any other comments or questions on the item for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items.
Move the items second.
All right, any comments or questions here on the MFA?
I have a question on MFA A, I believe it is. If I can find my notes. Excuse me for a minute. This is a project that has to do with letting three engineering contracts or agreements recent drainage work. Will we bid those projects individually?
Yes. Wait, drainage projects? I'm not sure about that. Let's have Eric come in and answer that.
Because we've run into some problems when we bid too many, let one contractor have too many projects because they tend to work them sequentially and the last project is delayed sometimes.
Right, but these are, but Eric, will those be bid separately or together on MFAB?
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear the question, Mr. Councilman.
MFAB is the Consultant Review Committee Report on several projects. Mr. Ryan has asked if those construction projects will be bid with the same contractor or separately.
They're actually anticipated to be separate projects, separate contractors.
Okay, that's, I was concerned about the sequential aspect of one contractor getting all the bids.
And they're actually very different type streets, so each one was selected for their individuality.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion on the MFA?
Mayor, I did have one quick comment as well, if you don't mind. Just, this is on C. And I just was glad to see that this is a risk workers comp claim. And I was glad to see that we actually appealed it. You know, so many of these, you don't see that. And this was a case where, you know, it looked like there was extreme disagreement between the two evaluations and I was happy to see that it looks like we were able to reduce the payment by almost a half.
Yeah, well, you know, it's a fine line. You know, we want to take care of our employees when they're hurt and so we want to be, go through that, but sometimes we question one or two that come through the line and I think the attorneys do a good job on it.
We don't see that very often, so I just wanted to point out.
All right, let's vote on the MFA. Cast your votes and it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, three items. Comments or questions on the PPA?
I did also have a quick question on this one. The roof on the Norick Arena was affected, I mean, it's had issues, but it was also affected directly by storm damage. And I forgot to ask Tim O'Toole, the last time I saw him, whether or not we had any insurance proceeds that would help.
Don't know the answer to that, Councilman. Let me check and get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, ready to vote the PPA? Cast your votes and it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. We have a motion in a second. Comment here? All right, cast your votes and the EAT passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT, reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket.
Move the items second. Individual consideration.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any individual considerations?
Your Honor, I have a couple of easy questions. Probably I'm the only one here doesn't know what they are, but I'm going to ask them anyway.
All right.
On A, 6A, 6C, L2, and N.
M was the last one?
Yeah, N is in November.
N is in November. All right, and John, you had some?
6D6.
Okay. Larry?
K and AE, Your Honor.
K and AE. Ed?
Z and AB.
Z and AB. All right, Pat, you want to get us started with item A?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just was curious, what is a liquid handling robot? Will you give automatic DWI tickets with that? It's supposed to be used in our DNA lab and I was curious what we're buying it for. $53,000, I understand, but...
Well, it's equipment just to help automate the process and the term robot is just what they call it in the industry, but it's going to help them with the processing of the DNA.
In the laboratory?
Yes.
So it's not going to be something...
No, in the laboratory.
Back around?
It's not, yeah.
Good, thank you, Your Honor. I was curious about that one. Item C is a fire station alerting system. What is that doing? Thank you. Thank you. Welcome to our meeting.
The fire, that's a new alerting system we've been putting in all the new fire stations. It reduces our time for the alerting. Lights and will kick on, that'll identify each individual apparatus. In case there's two apparatus there, it'll let you know with the, as soon as electricity comes to the peripheral, it will light up color for the engine or the ladder or whatever apparatus might be responding.
And how is that notification done now?
It's, it's actually a system that's been there when, I can't tell you when it was put in, but it's a set of contactors that are signaled and it's not, not state-of-the-art for sure, so.
But Chief, isn't there difference with the notification, all engines don't necessarily, all apparatus doesn't have to respond on every call that comes in? And this differentiates which engines or what apparatus?
Yes, it will differentiate which apparatus at that station goes. It also allows us that we have the ability to have in different sleeping quarters, it doesn't wake up all the people at the station, so it allows them to be ready and get a little more rest whenever they're not responding instead of just every time the lights kick on, everyone in the station has to get up.
But this is replacing the existing system?
It's replace, it will replace the systems. It's not replacing any of the existing systems we have now, but whenever we have a new station like Station 26 or some of the new stations that were on the 2007 bond issue, allows us to purchase the system for those stations.
And that's going to cost $200,000?
It's around $70,000 per station just to get the system in there. And it's, that entails the speakers, all the lights, part of the electronics that allows it to talk to the CAD system. This is, this ties right in with our computer-aided dispatch system. Some of the things that it allows is there is a timer that would be at the doors that gives you immediate feedback on how long it takes you to get to the apparatus and get out of the station. So it's kind of like getting graded every time you get an alert. You know, we try to get out of the station within one minute. That's, that's the time that we receive the alert till the time that we get our bunker gear on and actually pull out of the fire station. That's an NFPA standard and that helps us be aware of that we're either meeting that standard or not meeting that standard. And it, like I said, it gives you an immediate grade card. Either we need to get there quicker or whatever.
Let me ask you a question. Is that just, is that time part of your Leading for Results goal?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay. Pat?
L2 is a street widening project and the budget's only $955,000. What are we doing? Usually we spend a lot more money than that. I'm not complaining about that, but I was curious what we're going to do with only $900,000.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. I think one of the biggest differences in our streets is that sometimes we include an intersection, sometimes we don't. This one, I don't believe includes the intersection, which is why the cost is dramatically less than our typical street project.
I was just curious as to why that was so low. Thank you. And, Your Honor, on item 6N, this is a street improvement project, Northwestern Avenue, north of 164th Street. And that was an area where we had some really significant flooding a couple of years ago. Will this project help the drainage out there?
The project does. On Northwestern, approximately at, in the 170th range, and there is a channel crossing where the box sizes are actually being increased to take on the additional load of water. And so it includes drainage improvements along the widening as well.
So that will reduce the likelihood of those houses flooding like they did last year?
It will, it will help mitigate some of that. Obviously, some of the flooding that we experienced last year, as we talk about engineered designs, do not take into account storms that exceed the 100-year event. Last year, I think, as most of you know, we exceeded the 100-year more than once and so in those cases, it may not completely mitigate all flooding. So it would meet the current design standards and the project meets those.
Okay. Because we had, I think, a 500-year rain caused the damages out there a couple of years ago.
And if that were to occur again, I would suspect there would be some flooding, but we would hope not.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh-huh. John, D6?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. 6D6 relates to a PUD and the applicant is Kim Ray. And I just wanted to go on record saying that Kim Ray has been a great part of Oklahoma City for more than 65 years. This rezoning would allow Kim Ray to build a state-of-the-art campus. So I just wanted to go on record in support of this particular case. Also, they had a community meeting about a month or two ago and they had over 80 people to show up. And out of that group of 80 people, very few have protested. So, and Kim Ray is currently working with those protesters currently. So I just wanted to go on record and say I think this is a great application. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thanks, Joe. Larry?
Your Honor, item K is a small item in the total scope of the city, but it's very important to the folks in southwest Oklahoma City, especially around Monty Place and southwest 55th and South Drexel and southwest 42nd, as well as some locations in Ward 5 and Ward 6 for channel cleaning. So the bids are due in on the 20th of May and just wanted to put the neighbors on record out there that the channels will be cleaned shortly. And then item K, I mean, item AE is the awarding of a contract to complete the MAPS 3 Trail that will eventually run from Southwest 15th and Meridian and connect up with the Lake Overhoser Trail in Ward 1 in a Councilman Griner's area. And this is the half of the trail from Southwest 15th up to Council that will meet the trail that's under construction right now. So MAPS 3 Trail is under construction and should be completed shortly. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Larry. Ed, item Z?
And AB. I just wanted to ask Brent about these two projects. These are, this is a little over $4 million in grants from TIF II for two residential apartment developments. One, I understand, is a company from Indiana on the St. Anthony's campus. That's $3 million and then a little over $1 million for Level West on Second and Oklahoma. And we've talked about how $89 million of the allotment so far have been north of the river, none south. We've talked again about loans versus grants. Can you, can you explain the need for all of this $4 million being grants as opposed to loans?
Sure. We go through an extensive review of the financial statements and the performance of each, on each one of these projects and we look to see where they can get a, obtain a reasonable return, which, which in turn they can find adequate investors. In this case, the numbers, if you provide it in a loan, it just doesn't work in their performance. The grant is the only way that will work in their performance on either one of these deals.
So you don't believe it's possible that this would have happened without the grant?
No, sir.
Not possible?
No, sir.
Would it be possible with a 0% interest loan? Would we run that through the pro?
Even if you do that, again, it doesn't really fit in their performance because they have to pay that back and that impacts the bottom-line cash flow on the deal. So whether you stretch it out 10, 20 years, there still has a, an impact on their cash flow which reduces their return on investment.
And what kind of return on investment are we shooting for?
We try to keep them below, we like the 7% to 8% range and that's right where they are on these deals.
So the purpose of TIF is ostensibly to create development that wouldn't occur otherwise in blighted areas. I mean, do you consider these two areas blighted?
Yes, sir.
And the highest priority within the TIF II district?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes and it passes unanimously.
We do have a presentation. It would still probably be appropriate to do one on Kerr Park. Eric Wingers here. That was in the consent docket, but just take a few minutes on that.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We've got a brief presentation just to bring you up to speed on one of the items on your agenda regarding Kerr Park today. I think this is a project that we've discussed in the past, but now that we're actually ready to proceed with the issuance of final plans and specifications and to begin some work, we just want to make sure that there's no questions as we move forward. I think what makes the Kerr Park project unique, it is a bond project. It's one that was funded about $1.5 million from city bond funds, but Sandridge has come to the city and is willing to partner and actually improve the park much more than what would have been originally anticipated with a bond alone. And so today I present to you a partnership project. I do have Rick Brown with Sandridge with me today also that's available and can answer questions with me afterwards if necessary. But moving forward, as we look at the park, there's actually a very unique history of the park. And as we just finished the celebration of the city's 125th anniversary, the park actually began construction in 1930 and was named in honor of the mayor, the first mayor of Oklahoma City, Couch. And so with that, there's been a couple of other things that have occurred on that site. Obviously, it was previously the Rock Island Railroad right-of-way. In 1970s, McGee actually did the design of the park and now Kerr Park was dedicated by the late Senator Robert S. Kerr, presented to the city in 1975. And so this will actually take this park into the next future years as a complete enhancement of what is already there. I think most of you are very familiar with the park site. And if we look at this drawing, we're looking south and the, of course, if you look at the streets, we've got Robinson on the right, we've got Broadway on the left. Couch Drive is the area that's denoted with the red box and the yellow dashed line. And then Kerr Avenue is just off the bottom of the page. And you can see the former fountain and obviously there's a tremendous amount of improvements that are planned here on this side. I mentioned the agreement between Sandridge and Oklahoma City and again, the $1.5 million in bond funds. There's a significant improvement that Sandridge has proposed and I'll show you those in just one minute. But the agreement actually provides for them to donate those funds and also maintain the park for a period of 10 years. And so I know a question comes up regularly as we improve and make these parks, you know, downtown friendly, as we make sure that we improve, you know, how will maintenance be handled? Well, Sandridge has agreed to take care of this for 10 years. This is, of course, one of the previous pictures of what that park used to look like. And again, there was a kind of a stage setting. There were opportunities for some small and large events. I think that the original downtown Christmas tree was actually lit here in Kerr Park. So the design of the Kerr Park is actually going to be multipurpose. It's going to still, you know, provide for the large gatherings. There's going to be some large spaces, large grassy green areas. There's going to also be the opportunity to bring some smaller and more intimate events as well. So large to small and some medium-sized events will all be able to take place here. This is the area for those small group and individual seating... Thanks.
All right. Ready to vote the consent docket? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
We do have a presentation. It would still probably be appropriate to do one on Kerr Park. Eric Wingers here. That was in the consent docket, but just take a few minutes on that.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We've got a brief presentation just to bring you up to speed on one of the items on your agenda regarding Kerr Park today. I think this is a project that we've discussed in the past, but now that we're actually ready to proceed with the issuance of final plans and specifications and to begin some work, we just want to make sure that there's no questions as we move forward. I think what makes the Kerr Park project unique, it is a bond project. It's one that was funded about $1.5 million from city bond funds. But Sandridge has come to the city and is willing to partner and actually improve the park much more than what would have been originally anticipated with a bond alone. And so today I present to you a partnership project. I do have Rick Brown with Sandridge with me today also that's available and can answer questions with me afterwards if necessary. But moving forward, as we look at the park, there's actually a very unique history of the park. And as we just finished the celebration of the city's 125th anniversary, the park actually began construction in 1930 and was named in honor of the mayor, the first mayor of Oklahoma City, Couch. And so with that, there's been a couple of other things that have occurred on that site. Obviously, it was previously the Rock Island Railroad right-of-way. In 1970s, McGee actually did the design of the park. And now Kerr Park was dedicated by the late Senator Robert S. Kerr, presented to the city in 1975. And so this will actually take this park into the next future years as a complete enhancement of what is already there. I think most of you are very familiar with the park site. And if we look at this drawing, we're looking south. And of course, if you look at the streets, we've got Robinson on the right, we've got Broadway on the left. Couch Drive is the area that's denoted with the red box and the yellow dashed line. And then Kerr Avenue is just off the bottom of the page. You can see the former fountain. And obviously, there's a tremendous amount of improvements that are planned here on this side. I mentioned the agreement between Sandridge and Oklahoma City. And again, the $1.5 million in bond funds, there's a significant improvement that Sandridge has proposed. And I'll show you those in just one minute. But the agreement actually provides for them to donate those funds and also maintain the park for a period of 10 years. And so I know a question comes up regularly as we improve and make these parks downtown friendly, as we make sure that we improve. You know, how will maintenance be handled? Well, Sandridge has agreed to take care of this for 10 years. This is, of course, one of the previous pictures of what that park used to look like. And again, there was a kind of a stage setting. There were opportunities for some small and large events. I think that the original downtown Christmas tree was actually lit here in Kerr Park. So the design of the Kerr Park is actually going to be multipurpose. It's going to still provide for the large gatherings. There's going to be some large spaces, large grassy green areas. There's going to also be the opportunity to bring some smaller and more intimate events as well. So large to small and some medium-sized events will all be able to take place here. This is the area for those small group and individual seating areas. This will be just on the west side of the site. There is a proposal to plant a series of trees and landscaping there that even during, say, lunch hour, somebody could just simply have a lunch at the park. It doesn't have to always be a pre-planned event. There's also the opportunity where the former water stage was to have much, much smaller events. And I think there is some anticipation that maybe there would be sort of wedding showers or small ceremonies, things like that, that could actually be held at this new location. This is the overall design. And there's quite a bit of details that Sandridge went through and with their architect. But the plantings are designed to be multi-season. Obviously, areas of color throughout the park throughout the year. There's also been a lot of attention played towards the lighting, the movement of the sun, and how areas will be shaded and upkeep and all of those things. And so there's been a lot of work put into the overall design. Here, you see a lot of that landscaping with the large lawn in the upper center. But then, of course, the trees that are going to be placed along the site as well. ADA accessibility was key. So the park will be fully accessible, and you can see that through just this drawing. There's also going to be the maintenance of the Couch Drive as a vehicular access one way from west to east. Artwork is also a question I know that comes up from time to time. And there are three major art pieces that are on site. There's the 1889 statue that you see on the left. There's the Air Force monument that you see in the center. And then, of course, the Kerr bust on the right. The location of those is shown on this drawing. And generally, where they are historically is where they're going to be replaced. And so the 1889 statue has been removed for maintenance and repair, but it'll return. The Air Force monument, which is on the east side of the site, is actually going to be maintained in place. It's a very large structure and will be easy to remove. And then there's also some work planned with the Kerr bust. And so where it's down at a more ground level, it's going to be raised up to more personal height. And so we'll actually be able to see improvements in each of the artwork pieces. I think the other thing that's kind of interesting is two of those art pieces were actually designed by the same artist, Leonard McMurray. The 89 statue is actually got a new setting to be placed. I think most that are familiar with that, it's been on a six-foot-tall pedestal these many years. And it's very hard to see that. And so one of the settings that they're proposing is to actually return it to a more natural setting with the grasslands of Oklahoma. So with that being said, this is a rendering of what that'll look like when the park is complete. When we talk about the budget, Sandridge's contribution, you'll see here, is estimated at $3.2 million. We've got the city bond fund contributions. So a project that was going to be pretty small in scale, but obviously a very updated park is now going to be something much more than that at an estimated cost of $4.6 million. And then the last one that I'll show you here is the schedule. And so it's going to be done in two parts because of the bond funds and the need for the city to actually bid that work. That is already underway. We're actually planning to do that bidding and construction here this summer and into the fall. And when that work is completed in the fall of '14, Sandridge will then pick up and lead the finishing of the park. The items that the city's going to be bidding, obviously, is the remaining demolition. We're going to do a lot of the areas of the perimeter. The 180 streetscape elements, the pavers, the lighting, all of the perimeter-type items, those are the things that are going to be covered by the city's portion. And so you're going to see a lot of that work completed, and then Sandridge will do most of the infill. We're also going to be providing some of the same pavers for their contractor to make sure that all of that blends and is integrated completely. So with that, obviously, the park is ready to go. We've got the final plans with your approval today and can answer any questions that you might have. I also want to express some appreciation to the Parks Department. Obviously, Wendell Wisenhunt and Larry Ogle were instrumental in reviewing the designs. Also, the Planning Department with Aubrey Hammond Tree, helping us through the approval process with the DDRC and others as well.
Your Honor, just a couple of comments and questions. First of all, I'd like to thank Sandridge for their participation. I think this is a very tumultuous time in oil and gas industry, and they went ahead and honored their commitment, which I think is pretty outstanding. When will this be completed, the project, everything done?
I think we just back up one slide, Michael, real quick. I think we estimate right now that we've got, the city work will actually finish up fall of '14, but spring of '15 generally. So in about a year from now is when Sandridge anticipates completing the park.
All right. Maggie, did you want to say something?
I really would like to recognize Rick Brand again. Thank you so much, Rick. We appreciate Sandridge's participation. This is, I think we say this every week, but it's another incredible example of how the corporate community steps up and joins in partnership with the city of Oklahoma City to make things better. And so very much appreciate your participation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, thanks. All right. Let's move on to the concurrence docket. Looks like we have four items.
Move the items.
Comments or questions here? Yeah.
B. Sorry. Yeah, B. Just a comment about, and we've talked about this many times before, so I mean, all that applies. But this is for negotiate economic incentives with Tapstone Energy. And I have three concerns, most of which I've expressed before. Two are interrelated. One is just that we continue to lack diversification in our investments of this $75 million. We continue to target oil and gas companies, which are expanding. And I think that we need to invest beyond just a resource-based economy. The second is related, is that we're incentivizing behavior, which would happen anyway. There's a good article this week, cover story on Harold Hamm in Forbes Magazine, talking about that we're not just having an expansion of domestic oil production, but a historical expansion. That not since the days of J.D. Rockefeller have we seen this kind of transformation of the economy. A 50% increase in domestic oil production in the last four years alone. And so I think that to throw money at this time is incentivizing things that would happen anyway. It's not mandatory that we do it. Certainly, Devon would be more than qualified. They would qualify for these incentives, but they're not asking for them. I think that I'd like to imagine, or at least hope, that there's an increasing concern that we're incentivizing behavior that would happen anyway. I took note that former Mayor Kerr Humphries on Flashpoint last week talked about that, you know, we pay 1% gross production tax on horizontal drilling versus 7% on vertical, even though 80% is horizontal drilling. He stated, "I don't think that government should incentivize anything that is going to happen without the incentive." And believe me, horizontal drilling is going to happen without the incentive. As a principle, I don't think government should incentivize behavior that is going to take place without the incentive. And I couldn't agree more. But third, in this particular case, and without personalizing it or thinking that, if this was, I think past performance is an issue. And we do that sometimes. We look at companies and look at their viability and past performance. And I think that should be an issue as we sit down with negotiations. If this was a new company who had come from another state, something we didn't know about, and we noted that this leadership had taken a stock with shareholders across the country investing in it, which had plunged 92% in five years, in which there was an ouster in which TPG Axon accused the previous leadership of profiting from self-dealing in a series of transactions in which companies and trusts owned and controlled by the family had bought land and then sold it to the company at a markup, at which magazines like Forbes are saying things like shareholders have been mercilessly abused, asking questions like, "Is our system so corroded and degraded that no sufficient outside checks and balances exist to outlaw such perversions?" Using terms like cesspool of cronyism that is dividing our country today. And most importantly, a subpoena issued to that company in December, in which the Justice Department issued a statement stating that they were opening an investigation into the possibility of anti-competitive practices in the purchase and lease of oil and gas properties. All I'm asking for today, I'd like to, two things, two favors. One is to let us vote on this independently. I'd like to just vote against this just for me. But second, I assume it's going to pass. If we could slow-play these negotiations, there's no rush. There's no, this is going to happen. We know where they're going to move to. They're coming to Oklahoma City. If we could slow-play this to see what happens to the Department of Justice investigation, see what other opportunities, we would certainly be disappointed, I think, as we're spending a large amount of this $75 million this year, and the majority will have been allotted. If we had a headquarters opportunity, if we had another opportunity, and we had continued to rush to throw money at this oil and gas expansion, that's what I'd ask for. Thanks.
Your Honor, I just make one comment. I think the Councilman D did a good job of summing up some of the issues that we deal with frequently in Economic Development Trust. But in addition to the jobs being automatically created, we wanted to ensure to the best of our ability that they are created here in Oklahoma City. And that was not a given until we made the commitment to do this. So I don't like incentives at all. I wish we didn't have to give any. But since we're in a competitive mode right now and our competitors are giving subsidies, we're going to have to match that competition if indeed we want those companies here. Now, they are well-paid and they make a contribution to our community. The oil and gas business has been a part of Oklahoma's history for ever since. And I agree with you wholeheartedly that we should diversify. And certainly, the Chamber of Commerce is working hard to do that. And the Economic Development Trust will support those efforts every chance we can. But we have to take what we're given. And I think it's, you know, I think your point is good, but we need to have one more paragraph in there that says, "If indeed we didn't make these incentives, would they locate here?" Now, the jobs may be created, but they may be created in Denver or Houston or someplace else that has an energy center. But they were created here, and an important building in Bricktown is being renovated to take care of these people. So there is some significant benefits associated with this project that had it been done elsewhere, we would miss those.
Do you have a sense, Pat, for how large an incentive would meet that threshold? Where if we incentivized this amount, it would stay here? And if it was less than that, it might not? How large of an incentive is needed to tip the balance?
It depends on where our competition is. Because other communities are competing against Oklahoma City all the time for the location of these facilities. We just, Oklahoma City just lost a big one, a distribution center. Would have employed a lot of people. The salaries weren't that outstanding, but the number of employees was really insignificant. We lost it for whatever reason to another community here in Oklahoma. And so I think we need to be aware of the fact that we are in a competitive world. We need to meet the competition. Now, what that level of competition is, I can't always say because it depends on what the others are offering. But we are limited, and we've allocated this money, and we pay for performance only. Those jobs don't come along, they don't get paid. It was not a blank check sort of thing, where they just, we give them the check and they go put it in the bank. We only pay, and I think Brent will substantiate this, for performance. And we have those performance measures in the contracts that we agree to on these things. And so if the jobs aren't created as we promised they would be created, we don't pay.
Do we have any, do we have any evidence of how many of these jobs are created for people that live in Oklahoma City as opposed to the surrounding communities? It would seem to me that this is, I have a couple of other feelings about it also, but this is another example of Oklahoma City's taxpayers paying for the expansion for the suburbs. They don't put a dime in this. They don't put a dime's worth of incentive into this.
Now, the suburbs, we need to be careful. We need to define. We're talking about other communities, Midway City, Dell City, War Acres, Bethany, not just suburbs. Because some of our Oklahoma City suburbs do indeed pay taxes.
No, I'm talking about other municipalities. I mean, they don't put a dime in. And yet, I've always had the feeling that a lot of these high-dollar jobs don't come into Oklahoma City. I don't know that, but I'd like to know if we've done any studies to determine where these people live.
That's a very difficult thing to find out sometimes. But I know that Brett, when he's counseling, tries to take that into consideration.
Pete, I have a fear of...
When you hand somebody this much money, it shouldn't be that difficult to find out where the employees live. It would seem to me...
Well, but the employees aren't restricted to live anyplace. They can live wherever they want, and they can move.
I understand that. I understand that. But it would seem to me that if Oklahoma City's going to be the only one putting money in, we'd be well to know how many people actually in Oklahoma City are the beneficiaries of this? Or do they live in some other municipality? Because I, one thing I do agree with, I watched, and I'm not a big fan of the Sunday morning Turpin debacle, but I did watch it last... And I agree with former Mayor Humphries wholeheartedly. But I believe that we are subsidizing and incentivizing people that are going to be here anyway. And I think that's a terrible waste of money to do that. You know, that's how we got to MAPS in the first place. We tried incentivizing people to get them to come to Oklahoma City, and we failed to get them to come. And some of them, it didn't work. So we decided we'd reinvest in ourselves. And now here we are, 25, 30 years later, spending all this money to incentivize people to do the very thing that we stopped doing when we started building MAPS. And I think we ought to just take another look at the whole philosophy of doing that. Because MAPS prospered and is a brand that we're all proud of because when we passed those things, we had, whatever we spent our money on, we had it. And nobody had to come, not one person had to come. And we started this last MAPS program. We diverged from that a little bit. And this incentive program, to me, is a total divergence from that. Is because the idea that we should reinvest in ourselves, and we should be guaranteed that we're reinvesting in ourselves. And if we're not, then I think just a whole look at, the whole incentive program ought to be done. I said that three times.
You raise some interesting points, but Pete, you've got to remember now that at the Civic Center Auditorium, for instance, that was done with MAPS money, MAPS won. A lot of, $550 million, I believe, was spent out there. And there's no difference between I go buy a ticket or somebody from War Acres go buys a ticket. And so we're living with the exact result that you talk about, when we're being successful in our efforts to do it.
And if I could make a comment in that regard on the job creation, my anecdotal evidence is that we're bringing in tons of people from all over the country to come take these jobs. They're moving into our community. They're buying houses. They're shopping. They're eating in restaurants. And those people would not come here if it weren't for the jobs that are being created specifically because of these types of incentives.
I don't disagree that jobs are being created. We track that. We don't pay for it unless they are. So that part, I'm wholly in support of. First of all, I'm not sure they're being created in Oklahoma City. Maybe they are, but I would like to know whether they are or not. And the second thing is, I'd like to know whether they would have come or not. This idea of we're in competition, I'm not sure that's enough to get me to continue to tax Oklahoma City residents to pay for it. I mean, I understand that we're in competition, but I'm not sure that the net benefit is worth taxing our residents to continue to pay for it. I'd like some evidence other than just a good feeling that we have about it. And I think we can track some of that and do a better job of determining, as we go on in the future, and by doing a better job, I'm not criticizing the jobs being done before because it's been within the guidelines that were set out. So I'm not being critical of that. But I think as we move forward, I'd like to know, one, where are they going to live? And two, I'd like to know, I'd like some indication that it wouldn't happen otherwise. Similar to the question that was asked of Mr. Brand concerning the TIF money a while ago. I'd like to know, would that project have happened but for the incentive? Because we're incentivizing the very wealthiest people in Oklahoma City. We're not incentivizing people that need to get to the doctor. We're not incentivizing people that need to get to ride a bus. We're incentivizing, this money is going to the very wealthiest people in Oklahoma City at the top. And the jobs that are created are for the top-end people. They're good, very good, high-paying jobs. And if we're going to continue to do that, I'd just like some evidence that that's in our long-term best interest.
The MAPS projects you talked about are a good example of the success, I think, of this kind of an effort. You know, there's no additional money paid by a citizen from War Acres when he goes to the Civic Center or to the 89er Ball Field. He buys a ticket just like you and I do.
I agree with you.
We live in Oklahoma City, and we don't make any distinction between those two.
Right. No, I agree that there's no difference, but there ought to be. But difficult to look at somebody and determine if they come and go.
The further you live from Oklahoma City's Civic Center, the more you got to pay.
But I just, I think a balance between where the money is generated from and where it's going is not an unreasonable request.
Every project we deal with, they tell us it's very close, and it's oftentimes, if not every time, it's one of the differences. We don't know if that's true or not, but we're told as we do the evaluations, you don't know what tips the scales. And all the performance on all of the companies are different. Sometimes it's about the cost of living here, their abilities. Sometimes it's about training. Sometimes it's about our physical location. Sometimes it's about environmental risk, about where they are in the country. There's all kinds of things that tip the scale. Sometimes it's local incentives. They put all those into their formulas and their processes. It's just not jobs. It's retail also falls in that category. You just don't always know what happens. All of them are complex models, and all of them are different, especially when they're this large. And I don't know if the money goes to the people that run the company. Some of those people lose those companies. They don't, they aren't successful in them. But most of those monies go to guarantee the jobs of the people who are out there, and they help support those jobs. And so I think most of the job creation dollars goes to the people that are taking those jobs.
All right, Mike. Dave, do you want to say something? I'll give you the final word on this topic, and then we're going to move on.
I welcome the discussion that we're having. And perhaps it's an indication that perhaps we should have a segment of one of our future meetings focusing on incentives in general. That way, we could...
That way, we could be better prepared to speak for or against these, and perhaps look at possibly expanding incentives in some regards. Personally, I think we need to be more aggressive with incentives in the retail area, especially as it relates to areas on the outer edge of the city that are being impacted by the surrounding municipalities. So perhaps just a future meeting, one of these days.
All right. What I think I heard Ed say was he would like that one item pulled so we could vote on it separately. So Ed, I'll take that as a motion on item 7B? That we'll vote on 7B separately. Yeah, so we have a motion on the rest of the concurrents docket. So why don't we first vote on item A, C, and D? You with me? Okay. Cast your votes, and that passes unanimously. Now we'll vote on item 8B, which is the item from the Economic Development Trust. Cast your votes, and that passes 8-1. We're on to item eight.
Ward 7, by the way, Mr. Mayor.
That's right. The jobs are being created in Ward 7 in record numbers.
Your Honor-
And, yeah, Larry?
Just for the viewers out there, these projects are, don't just show up suddenly, miraculously, at the council without total and thorough vetting ahead of time. The Economic Development Trust, chaired by Councilman Ryan, I happen to sit on that trust also, has already gone on over the particulars of each of these transactions that come and get to this point. And I can assure the voters, you may not like it or not, but the projects that get here for our consideration all adhere to the intent of the legislation, the ordinances, the vote of the people. The funds for this particular operation here were authorized in the 2007 General Obligation Bond Program, were they not, Mr. Couch?
Yes, sir.
And parameters were set up on how those monies would be spent, how much a job would be created to do that, the type of paybacks that would be required before we would incentivize, and also how we would protect the taxpayers' money should the project not create all the jobs that were intended. And so if I was the public, I would be very, very satisfied. And I'd encourage some of the councilmen who have these questions to come to the Economic Development Trust meetings and listen to the debate, listen to the questions that are answered, and they would have a much better appreciation for what's behind it rather than just waiting here on the last minute to voice their concerns. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. All right, we're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. Our first is a zoning case in Ward 5 at 16300 South Pennsylvania Avenue. It's currently AA, and it would become a new planned unit development. David, how do you want to start off with this? We have some people, as you know, that have signed up this week.
Yes, we will have the presentation by the developer. Mr. Box, I believe, is going to make an opening presentation.
Now, I'll ask everyone that comes up to give their name and address for the record, please.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Richard McCowen, Zach Roach, and Chris Anderson. This is a unique case. It's one that we went to Planning Commission way back last November. And at the time, at that hearing, we had a four-to-four vote. We asked it to be sent to council without a recommendation, and when it came to council, council had sent it back to Planning Commission because they wanted a recommendation. So we went back through the Planning Commission process, and it is now here before council with an eight-to-nothing unanimous recommendation for approval. What we have is truly a unique development. My client is in the business of creating not residential neighborhoods, but creating communities. Oftentimes, this council sees applicants come with a PUD in order to increase density or to have something within their development that doesn't meet the zoning regulations. Well, here we have a situation where the applicant has done a PUD that will allow for a really unique community. They're able to do things with porches and designs of homes that I'm going to let Mr. McCowen explain. But it's significant to note that this PUD actually decreases the density from what the R1 density would allow. The comprehensive plan calls for this area to be urban growth, meaning R1 density would be appropriate. That's because infrastructure, including sewer and water, are in place. When you look at the map before you, a couple of things of note. Immediately east of the subject tract is a PUD that allows for 5,000 square foot lots, and that is for the entire mile. So the density to the east is significantly higher than what is proposed in our PUD. If you look to the west of our site, it says AA, and if you look south of our site, it says AA. Now, those designations are merely placeholders. All of this property are tied up in the hands of developers. All of the property you see as AA, south and west, will be redeveloped for some form of single-family and hopefully some form of commercial development. But it is, it is worth noting, what we're able to do through a PUD here is not sidetrack and not get away from regulations, but create a lasting community that will have lasting value. What we have is a three-tracked PUD. We have Track 3, which are the larger lots, which average 9,000 square feet. Track 1 averaged 6,900 square feet. And then we have Track 2. Currently, the minimum lot size there is around 5,500, which is still a decrease in density from what's to the east. We did meet with the neighbors who are here in protest multiple times. One of the issues that arose time and time again is that they wanted a masonry wall on the north property line. Worth noting on our north property line, rather than just abutting our neighbors to the north like you see in most developments, we have a 50-foot strip of land that is in an oil and gas easement. Typically, the oil and gas easements are just dead man land that can't be touched. Because of my client's relationship with this oil and gas developer, they're going to allow us to do certain things to make this a usable, walkable green space. We were against building any form of wall other than some form of green hedge. What you have in the materials we handed out are a copy of some pictures of a red-tipped fatina, which is a substantial plant material that we propose to build on that north property line. We're willing to plant the entire half-mile of our property up front. We think that is a better solution than a concrete wall. It will grow taller than a concrete wall, but over time, it will be a source of beauty rather than just a hard masonry wall. After the last meeting with the neighbors, we went back and started putting a pencil to it to, could we make this wall work? The first thing we had to do was talk to the oil and gas company. The other thing I handed you was a letter. We got a letter back very quickly that said, under no uncertain terms, would they allow any form of permanent structure, which in their opinion, a masonry wall would be. One of the things that we are all willing to do is build a six-foot chain link fence on that north property line to prohibit any movement north from our residents. Over time, we think the red-tipped fatina will grow into it, so you won't notice it, and it'll just be a beautiful hedgerow. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'd like Mr. McCowen to get up here. One other thing, on the north end of Track 2, we are willing to decrease the density of that north line by approximately 20%. That will ensure that there are no lots that are less than the R1 standards on that north line. Be happy to answer any questions, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McCowen.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Richard McCowen, Green Earth Land Design, 4409 Cannon Drive in Norman. Glad to be here today. Trying to make this brief, 13 years ago, I moved down here from Kansas City, happily building houses up there, but in large part, thanks to the efforts of MAPS and seeing all the exciting things that were going on in Oklahoma City, I sort of jumped at the chance to take over the land development operations from my father for Ideal Homes. And the very first thing my brother asked me to do, rather told me to do, is create the greenest neighborhoods in the country. We really didn't know what that meant at the time, but he said, "I don't want any more gritted-out subdivisions that don't create community. I want you to figure out how to create community." And that has sent me on a fantastic adventure of creating meaningful, open-space communities with walking trails, with eyes on those open spaces, places that people can call home, safe places for kids to grow up, to watch tadpoles turn into frogs, to be as connected to nature as you can in our busy suburban lives that most kids are growing up in today. I've had the great pleasure of working with Dr. Kaufman, PhD of ecology, my landscape architect from the University of Oklahoma, as well as lots of other researchers from both OSU and OU. And what we're bringing for you here today is where we're at with all of the knowledge that we've gained from the past 13 years of trying to create lasting, fabulous, permanent communities that become places that are of substantial significance for our community. And as you look at our historic neighborhoods like Edgemere Park, one of the things that's great about it is it has a fabulous park running through the middle of it, and that big, meaningful, open space gives you a safe place for kids to go and play. This is, as David mentioned, part of a larger design. It ties into the Trailwoods community that's to the east. And it also, I represent another group that has 320 acres just south of this, and we've been in discussion for several years now with more public schools about creating a new elementary school at the southeast corner of the intersection of 164th and Penn. So with those things in mind, we've designed this community not just to bring the pedestrian, and particularly the small pedestrian that you sure wouldn't want to get backed over by someone backing out of their driveway in their SUV. But we've also created a safe walking trail to that future elementary school. And as you know, communities like this take years to fully build out, but we think that these things are probably going to come together over the next five to 10 years in a, in a good and timely manner. We've done lots of research with stormwater quality management. In fact, we're four years into an EPA research project in Norman called Trailwoods. It's just now been handed over to the Department of Engineering from the University of Oklahoma, and it's gone into the testing phase, where we're looking at our best management practices of filtering out pollutants like phosphorus and nitrogen, as well as other pollutants that come off the roof and the roads, and seeing the benefits of our low-impact best management practices as compared to the typical way things are created. This PUD allows us to have that significant open space, which can begin to do the ecological work of stormwater processing and filtration, at the same time, creating a great community asset and a great place for kids to go catch fish and go for a walk and keep people in shape. I know that's been a huge initiative, and I love seeing people out moving in the neighborhoods. The minute we build a walking trail, people are walking on it, literally the very next day, sometimes before the concrete's even hard. The last thing that this community has that we were bringing to you with the planned unit development, we'd like to have the opportunity to pull the front porches forward. We know it's important for cars to be able to clear the sidewalks, so that 20-foot setback that's in all of the R1 zones still is in this idea, so the cars have a place to, you know, your guests park in front of the garage and clear the sidewalk. But if we can pull those front porches forward, just an additional six feet, then you've got a better, more friendly, walkable neighborhood. Well, for those reasons, I would love to see this become a demonstration project for how we begin to look at future green development. We're really wanting to do things that allow us to create this meaningful open space and still have a viable project. Mike, I'm happy to answer any questions. Very excited about this. I think it will be a fabulous addition to the city as a whole, and hopefully, some of these houses are actually in the executive price range. Maybe we'll get some of those, those high-paying jobs to come and live in this part of the city in the future.
Thanks, Richard. David?
There are no other questions, I'll turn it over to the protesters.
Thank you. Francis, we have-
We have some people that have signed up. I can call them up.
Yes.
Jerry Fochi.
Patricia's going to go first.
Okay.
If you could. I'm Patricia Pedolick at 12231 South May, and I'm with the firm Fochi &amp; Yoffe. Jerry will also be addressing you, but he is, he'll tell you, he's a little incapacitated. He had an accident. We represent many of the homeowners in the Country Edge Estates and the adjoining neighborhoods. These neighborhoods are all five-acre lots. I don't doubt that this is a well, a nice addition, a nice addition, but not next to five-acre lots. It's a very compact, dense addition. The houses are going, that are but the north, the housing addition of Country Edge Estates are 5,000, 6,000 square feet lots. I know they said that they were going to expand Track 2, but if you look on the map, that is only a small portion of the lots that will be adjoining Country Edge Estates. One of the things I want to point out, and they've mentioned and will mention, that this is in the urban growth area. I'd like to point out the ordinances which go, you know, are over the plan. I mean, this, the ordinances do not necessarily say that you have to follow the Plan OKC, and not even the Plan OKC says that this is required, that you develop these into these What I'd like to point out are some of the ordinances that do say that the land use and the zonings, they need to be unified. Abutting up against five-acre lots is not unified. They should be allocated in a manner that is, that is compatible with the adjoining additions. This is not compatible. These are five-acre lots. People here bought their houses years and years ago with the idea that they were living These are, like I said, the ordinances are very specific, that it needs to be compatible. These are all from the ordinances, not from the plan, not from me. These are from things that were developed and voted on by us. There should be a visual transition. There should be, it should screen incompatible uses, minimize any negative impact. I know they're talking about putting in a green wall, but the green wall does not keep kids from getting over into an agricultural area. When I say agriculture area, I'm talking about farm animals. These are, they have horses, they have pigs, and they can have that because they're in the agricultural area. So we're talking about abutting up a housing addition with an attractive nuisance for kids. The green wall also does not screen out any sound. The sound level, and one of our homeowners is going to talk about that, but the sound level from a housing addition like this onto these five-acre lots is going to impact their quality of life. One of the ordinances that the additions of PUDs, now, these are all relating to PUDs, not to just general development. These are all relating to PUDs that I'm talking about, but they should be similar in placement and proportion. These are not similar in placement and proportion. One of the things I do want to talk about also, and Jerry will be talking about this a little bit, is the traffic. I don't know how many of you, I know that Councilman Greenwell has been on the south side and seen Pennsylvania. I live off of Portland on the south side, and it's very similar. It's a two-lane road. It's a two-lane road, just with the asphalt top, not the concrete, and I don't know the technical term, so I apologize. There's no curbs, there's ditches on each side, and there's no plan. This is not in any bond issue. A housing addition like this will put conservatively 1,000 more cars out onto Pennsylvania and out onto northwest 164th and 149th. That's a lot for a road that's not designed for that. It is a country road, an agricultural area road. There was no traffic impact analysis done. I really don't know why. It qualified for one. It was supposed to be done, but for some reason it was waived. I don't know why it was waived. We're going to have several of our, of the homeowners in the area are going to address you and talk about how this is going to impact them. But I do want you to keep in mind, I know this is an urban growth area. I know that this is allowed. I know that R1 is allowed in an urban growth area. But just a couple of miles to the west is a rural area, very similar in development. And they're going to have, they have the protection of rural area. This area should be considered a rural area in spite of it. And with the development of the new plan, and Jerry's going to talk about that, this is being looked at as perhaps should be rethought, and I'm asking you to rethink it now.
Okay. Thanks, Patricia. Robert Newman? Do you want to speak now, Jerry, or you want to... Okay.
My wife told me that motorcycle or married, so if anybody here wants to buy a motorcycle, I'll be glad to sell you one, okay? I think I could live a lot better with a wife than I can the motorcycle. Listen, you know, I know where you guys are sitting, and I appreciate each and every one of you, the service you do. I know after 14 years on the council, I knew wherever Barking Dog was in South Oklahoma City. So this project is one, first of all, I'll say, I think it's premature, to say the least. And the reason why it's premature is because the infrastructure in this area, guys, we're three blocks from the city limits where they're building this project, three blocks. The road itself, here's a picture of one of the roads.
This is Pennsylvania.
This is Pennsylvania Avenue, okay? The next one, picture that we have of Pennsylvania Avenue shows this is right at the edge of their property, and this road is already deteriorating. It's already breaking up. By the time they put heavy equipment on that and they bring in their graders, their construction trucks, this road is going to be destroyed, okay? It will be inhabitable. It is already breaking up. It is full of chug holes. It is in terrible shape. Now, what's going to happen is, is as it's being developed, it is not under any bond issue, nor has it been put on any bond issue. There's not anything in your budget for doing work on this project. So basically, because we're starting this development this early, the citizens of Oklahoma City are going to be having to come up with money to replace a road that so far hasn't been even conceived or thought of being worked on. It is a country road with very little traffic. It's going to turn into a road with a lot of traffic now, and I think it's way premature to even develop this. But being on the council, I know that compromises is things that we do, okay? So the Oklahoma City Plan has established a citywide policy to review land uses for their impacts on surrounding developments and determine which uses maybe need tighter controls to minimize the impact. We're talking about, we've offered some compromises on this particular project, okay? They're talking about putting a fence, cyclone fence separating these homes that, some of the homes in this area, they're all on five-acre lots, homes range anywhere from probably $550,000 to $1 million, okay, on these five-acre lots. There are, the current one, they have 38 houses budding right up to the edge of these five-acre lots, and I think they're on 50-foot lots. By putting a cyclone fence there, there's not a cyclone fence anywhere in Oklahoma City separating this type of addition. You don't find them on Lakeside and South Oklahoma City. You don't find them at Valverde. You don't find them in any of the nicer neighborhoods do you find a cyclone fence separating this type of a property? First of all, I'm a kid. I used to be a kid, now I'm an old kid. But I used to climb those things. You can scale a cyclone fence, okay, with a rock fence, a mortar fence, whatever you want to call it. It would at least keep the young people from climbing over the fence and getting into their property and to risk the danger of an attractive nuisance injury where they're coming to see the horses. They climb over the fence, they get injured, and then the landowner's going to be hit with a lawsuit. And you know how I hate lawyers. Oh. All right. Here's the, the new plan says, "New development outside of established neighborhoods and design review districts is not subject to holding character standards for quality or design. The visual distinction between urban and rural is blurring. Rural and urban, rural and suburban and urban areas lack defining character." Basically, what this means is, guys, we need to blend this. We've asked that the larger houses, that they at least place larger houses on the line to blend the two neighborhoods in. If they're going to build in that area, at least have a transition from your larger houses to your smaller houses. Now, the developer agreed to put larger lots next to the seller's property. When they bought this property, the seller says, "Okay, I'll sell you this property, but I don't want these smaller houses near my area. No, uh-uh, I don't want that. I want you to put the larger houses near my area." So the seller's being protected who sold the property, but my people aren't being protected. So we're asking that larger lots be placed, aborting country edge estates, so at least there's a transition between the two areas. Now, the other thing that we're very concerned with in this area is that the, and we're going to have someone talk about density, we're going to talk about land, is just remember this, guys, the largest investment, investment a person makes is in a home. These people that have lived on these five-acre lots, now you're going to take 38 homes bordering right up against them on these smaller lots, and it's going to stand out. It's not fair to the smaller land. I grew up in a house where I could touch all four walls, okay? But it should blend in so it's not so noticeable. You don't put a trailer park near Valverde, okay? You don't put smaller houses near these bigger houses because it diminishes both of them. And it's not fair to both homeowners. We're just asking that they increase the size of the houses bordering up near the edge of the line of country edge estates so it's not so noticeable. And I still think it's premature because the road that exists there, I'd encourage every councilman to drive down that road, and I'd challenge you to drive faster than 40 miles an hour because you're going to have a blowout with a number of chug holes on that road. It's terrible. I'm asking you to think about this, and I know if, this is just a zoning issue. It's going to come back with the plat design, and I'm going to be very blunt. I'll be frank and I'll be earnest. Those of you who know me, that's how I am. We had the same developer put in another addition right next to, I think, what was the name of the addition? Wildflower. He put vinyl siding houses, one-car garages, right next to houses valued at $250,000 to $300,000. And while I was on the council, I was promised at that time that he would put brick veneer around the outlying houses so that it would at least blend in the neighborhoods. That still hasn't happened. Now he's got two-car garages with still vinyl siding. I'm asking that if this thing does pass, Mr. Greenwell, that you keep a close look on the compromises that are made and make sure they are followed through. Because all this sounds great, I'm for rainforest, and I'm for all that, and the greenery and the walking, but I still have to protect the people on that side of town. And I just think right now that they're being left out in the cold on this decision, and I would like you to really be strict on what you require. I'm asking you to vote against it, but I don't think that's going to happen. But I'm at least asking you to, they've tried to compromise, they've asked for bigger houses, asked for a wall there separating them, not a cyclone fence, and so those are the two things that we're asking. Thank you very much.
Looks like the Newmans are here, asking to speak.
My name is Robert Newman. I live at 15404 South Pennsylvania. I am also a licensed architect in the state of Oklahoma. I own three-level design at 10400 Greenbrier Place, which is also in Oklahoma City. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this project with you today. I know that a lot of you aren't familiar with the area, so I brought kind of a aerial map to kind of show you where this is in the context of the city. The top is bordered by southwest 134th Street. The bottom is bordered by both Newcastle and Norman. The east is Moore, and to the west is I-44. The proposed PUD 1514 is shown in red, and you'll note to the north and west, and to the south also are existing low-density acreages that have organically grown over decades. My house has actually been there for more than four decades. I grew up in the neighborhood and have remained there. I think one of the things that was brought up earlier that I think we really need to take into consideration is the environmental impact of this development. I know that there's a lot of things that are being done within this development to help mitigate the impact on the environment. But you'll notice that this development is at the extreme southern part of South Oklahoma City. I know that it is slated for urban development, but quite frankly, this is a textbook definition of urban sprawl. As has been noted, there are no businesses or retail in this area of note. Almost every person that lives in this addition, if it is built, will travel a considerable distance to work. Literally hundreds of thousands of gallons of gasoline will probably be burnt every month by the thousands of cars that go back and forth from this community to the places they One of the, we have two big issues, and I think that the main issue Jerry kind of covered, and that really is density. And I've put together a couple of slides here to help you understand the relationships between the existing properties and what is being proposed. You'll note that there's two squares on here. One's green, one is red. That is the proportional relationship between the lot size that is being proposed to the existing five-acre tracks. Some of the density for the smaller lots is actually 43 and a half times more dense than the required density that we were forced to meet as part of being double A for our The highest density, as has been noted, is directly against the existing low-density acreages. There's no transition, and I think that's the most important thing to take into consideration here. There is no transition in density between the two neighborhoods. The highest density is pushed directly up against the lowest density. And I think one of the things that's really important to understand is the fact that the people that live in these type of, two different types of residential developments, the low-density and high-density, have very different lifestyles. They use their property very differently, and I think that creates some inherent conflicts between the two. We've talked about some of the issues with livestock, et cetera, and I think that if there had been a transitional area between the two, that would help to mitigate these two. We've worked with the developer and asked for those things, but to date, we have not been able to come to any compromise with them, although we have floated, I believe, six different ideas out on the table, and to date, we have been told that they're all not cost-effective. The last thing on this slide that I want to point out, again, is just a relationship to help you understand where these two types of developments are relative to each other. You'll notice that there is a chart across the bottom and over on the left-hand side, we can look at this backwards, are five-acre tracks. And as you go to the right, that is the number of times more dense. Each of the things that I have on there are more dense than the five-acre tracks. The two-and-a-half-acre tracks are obviously right in here, are twice as dense. As we slide further over, you'll see one-acre tracks, which is, these are actually in a development that's in our area. And then we'll go over even further, almost all the way to the right side, you'll see the Oklahoma City Minimum Standard. PUD 1514 actually has houses that are below the city minimum standard of lot size. They're actually 5,000 square feet, whereas the Oklahoma City Minimum Standard is 6,000 square feet. I really couldn't find any other residential developments that were more dense than what's being proposed, and again, this is directly adjacent to the five-acre tracks. I was able to find a two-story apartment complex that was actually more dense. So what's being asked for here is actually between less than the minimum standard in apartments in density. And I don't think that you could get much more of an extreme opposite ends of the spectrum in regards to the density. I did a little bit of research on some of the things that we had been discussing that I wanted to share with you today. Our main issues which are related to density are safety, security, light, noise, pollution, and privacy. One of the reasons that we asked for the green wall, or we asked for the masonry wall was to address these issues. And I think we've talked about earlier that a lot of people do have horses, there's even some donkeys, in the neighborhood that the kids could be drawn to and potentially injured, not understanding the danger of getting into a pasture with a large animal. To the, I started out by looking at the noise issue, and it's pretty easy to find information on masonry walls, precast concrete walls, because they are frequently used to attenuate sound. I'm sure that you've all seen that on highways. We see these large masonry or concrete walls, and the reason we see those is because they're extremely effective at attenuating sound. I also looked into a green wall and trying to find out what the sound attenuation from that is. That was one of the things that the developer had suggested. I couldn't find any data on this. So we ended up contracting AVD, who is a commercial audio/video consultant, and I was able to find a red-tip fatina hedge, very similar to what's being proposed here. They were able to do an acoustic test on that wall, or that hedgerow, in order to determine its effectiveness at attenuating sound. What we found is that there was a 3 to 4 decibel reduction. We tested, the test area is indicated here, it was in the densest part of this hedge. They were somewhere in the neighborhood eight to 12 feet tall and fairly dense. In contrast, a masonry wall or a precast concrete wall similar to what we have proposed will have a sound reduction of 38 to 40 decibels. Now, the important thing to understand about that is that when you calculate decibels, it uses logarithms, and with the impact of that is 30 decibels and 40 decibels to go from 30 to 40, most people perceive that to be a doubling of sound intensity or noise level. So the difference between 3 and 4 decibel reduction and 38 to 40 is huge. There is no comparison, really. One of the other things to note, the homeowner that had planted this hedgerow, I talked with him quite a bit about it, because I noticed in the other photo, you'll see that there are some holes in the hedge. There's also some hedges that are significantly smaller than others, and I asked them if some of those were damaged in an ice storm or something perhaps, and he had to replace perhaps, and he had to replace them. And he said, no, that they were all planted at the same time. Some of them, for whatever reason, probably soil conditions, had grown better than others. And they're seven to eight years old. Obviously, some of them had died. So you can see quite clearly that this really doesn't address the privacy issue either, because it's fairly easy to see through the holes in the hedgerow. I know Jerry had talked about the chain-link fence. Obviously, he's not the only one that's climbed them, because I have too. So I think that that doesn't necessarily address our issue or our concerns in regard to safety and security. The last thing that I did was I tried to understand, one of the issues that the developer brought forth was the cost of the masonry wall. So I wanted to understand it in the context of this project. So during our meetings, they had told us that the least expensive house in the... In this project, in the product line that was the least expensive, was $165,000. I took that as a baseline number, multiplied it by the number of houses in this planned development, if they built all of those houses at $165,000, which they are not going to do, obviously. Then I also consulted with a local fence company, got a linear price for the fence, a eight-foot precast concrete fence, similar to the ones that you have all seen, and looked at that based on the cost of the project. That cost would be three-tenths of one percent. More than likely, the house, the median house price is going to be much higher, so that's probably going to be one-tenth of a percent. I frequently deal with budgets, as you guys frequently do. One-tenth of one percent of a budget cost doesn't even get in my radar. And I don't think that it's a large stretch to build this wall to help mitigate the impact on the adjoining neighborhood. Unless you guys have any questions, I appreciate you allowing me to present today.
At least not right now, Robert. Thanks. Is it Roy or Ray? Okay. So it looks like we've heard from... I have a couple of questions, David. Is it...
Yes.
I don't know if this is for David or Richard, but can you address the sprawl issue? Because I think critical here is are we addressing infill between Moore and Norman? Or are we just merely sprawling into the edge of nowhere?
That's a great question, Your Honor. And when we sat down to have individual meetings with not only the council but planning commission members, one of the first things we heard from the four original no votes was, "Guys, I'll listen to you, but this is sprawl. This is out in the middle of nowhere. I can't have it." And we presented this map, and if you'll allow us, I'd like to show you, because when we told people that we consider this infill, they kind of looked at us like we were crazy. But when you look at how Norman, Moore, and South Oklahoma City are growing together, that's what this is, is this is infill development. And there is no retail now, but you've got to have the rooftops before you have the retail. So... And I'll have Richard address the specifics, but he's involved in multiple of these tracts that are all in the hands of private developers. The subject track fits right here on this map. All over here is already developed, and that's the Featherstone addition. So as you come now south, these are all in Oklahoma City. These are all tied up in the hands of developers that will...
Are all those built now or are those planned?
Some are built, some are planned.
This neighborhood is built here to Franklin Road. There are houses under construction here of this fifty-acre parcel. These are being built. This is the Talley Barret addition by...
Can you show what's Oklahoma City, what's Moore, and what's Norman?
This is in the city limits of Oklahoma City, as is this track. This is the border. This is Norman. This is unincorporated, including the county. This is Norman here, and this is the city of Moore. And this track is under development also by... Very much the two cities growing together. There's significant development right here, the three-hundred-year park.
Yeah, but that's three miles away. But, okay, so go down now to the bottom-left part of that map. I'm assuming that's southwest, if the top's north. Down here, is that the floodplain of the river?
This is the river.
And so is that going to be developed? Or because it's in the floodplain, is it going to be something else? And maybe you have to guess or just kind of tell me more, because you know more than me.
That is correct. This is the five-hundred-year floodplain down in this area, and so it probably will remain open or very low development, particularly the parts of Norman.
Okay. And is that in Norman? Is that in the city limits of Norman, that floodplain aspect?
Yes, sir.
Where is the existing retail or commercial in this area?
Roughly on 149th Street East into Moore. Is that what you're asking for?
I guess what I'm really asking is where would those that live here shop in Oklahoma City, Moore or Norman?
Our hope would be Oklahoma City. What's outline... Everything you see in red is proposed future retail. I'm about to file an application on 149th and Western. That's a twenty-plus-acre, all-retail PUD, 164th. And then we just got done about a month ago, this council approved a PUD up just north of 149th and Western. So as rooftops continue to come online, that will drive this retail. But without the density, the retail won't come online.
Just from historical perspective, about a year ago, they finally widened Western Avenue from 134th down to Norman, which linked the communities a little bit better.
So you're seeing development along Western or...
We hope.
We will.
Yeah, I hope commercial really takes hold of along Western Avenue and actually begins to pull some of the retail from Moore back into Oklahoma City.
Richard, would you build in a five-hundred-year floodplain?
No, sir. No, we don't build in...
Okay. And do cities allow that?
It can't be done with an engineer's...
Those that feel lucky?
That's really not our policy.
All right. And you can put the map up. My last question is with the wall. The neighbors are seeming to take the stake that you don't want to pay for a wall. And if their math's right, it does seem like a small... Personally, I don't like walls that, you know, that are between neighborhoods. If I had my way, you know, we just wouldn't have them. I don't think they're... I don't think they increase community to have walls. But if that's what they want, I'm not going to be completely mindful of their choice. And what they're saying is on the cost, is it the cost? Is that what's keeping the wall, if it were a good idea, from being constructed?
Your Honor, it's a great question. The answer is no. At the end of the last meeting, we went to the oil and gas company that holds those easement rights and asked for permission. And they said no. And that's the letter that you have before you. They will not allow us to build a wall in that fifty-foot easement. And so there is no way to create a wall that will attain the desire that the neighbors want.
What are they doing in that area that they don't want a wall? Are these pipelines that are underneath?
They have...
And they're taking oil from where to where? Are these from wells?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so they have active oil and gas lines that are running through that fifty-foot easement, and therefore their rights are...
How deep are these lines?
Well, that I don't know. I know there's several.
All right. Yeah, sure, Jerry.
Concerning the wall, a cyclone fence, in my addition, I live at Kingswood addition. The wall that they have, they're all based... You can buy walls that are faced on slats. In other words, you literally have an entire section that will fit down within a slat and can be easily removed. In our addition, we've had to remove them several times. So it's not going to interfere with this oil.
How tall of a wall are you thinking?
A six-foot wall. We've got them around... Look at every, almost every addition, and they have the very similar wall. They're not cinder blocks.
Yeah. They look okay. I just don't like what they imply.
Well, I know, but they're concerned about the sound. They're concerned about the noise and the crease in the noise. And I don't think that's too much of a compromise to ask that they do this.
Well, six-foot doesn't seem to be, you know, all that...
I don't think so either. And as far as whether this is urban... This is urban sprawl. You can, you know, put a dress on a pig, but it's still a pig, okay? There's not one gas station anywhere near this. There's not one grocery store anywhere near this. There is no amenities anywhere near where they're building. It is less than three blocks from the city limits. You've got Newcastle here. You've got the Canadian River floodplain here. All the houses south of this addition are all on a minimum of five-acre lots. And now they're going to increase the density to the same thing as an apartment complex out in the middle of nowhere? It is urban sprawl, Mr. Greenwell. You can color it whatever you want to color, but it is. And as far as Western, we got a four-lane road at Western. We didn't start development until they built the four-lane road. Here, you're starting to develop when you've got a road that's not even on the bond issue. You know, you're going to be sending, spending city tax dollars fixing this road up. It is urban sprawl, and that's exactly what it is. It's way premature.
Let me ask a question to the developer. You know, you're not going to snap your fingers this thing's all going to be built tomorrow. I know, and how long is it going to take to start to finish? What sort of implementation plan do you foresee? And is that based on the market, or is that just based on your financing? Or how do you go about deciding how fast you build it?
Usually, we base our estimates on... And most of... We base our pro formas and our projections based on historic absorption in the area. This particular neighborhood is probably a ten-year buildout. And just to be able to sell more than forty houses a year in a given neighborhood, it will definitely put it in the top twenty fastest-selling neighborhoods in the city of Oklahoma City, if it outperforms that.
How many homes are in this neighborhood?
I believe we're at a... With the reduction in lots, we're down to 469.
Okay. I'm through. David?
I have a question, too. Somebody mentioned not doing a traffic analysis. What was the reason for that?
Here's the reason. This didn't qualify. The staff reviewed it, and based on the full buildout, it did not warrant, based on the ordinance in place, a traffic study, because that full development, the infrastructure in place, will still carry and handle what is proposed. So that is why.
And then the density issue that came up, those numbers don't seem correct, but I... That's just me thinking. So do you have any response to that?
Here's the density issue. Our density within the entire development will be 3.17 dwelling units per acre. Your standard R1 per code allows 7.26 dwelling units per acre. This is significantly less dense than most single-family developments that my clients typically come before this council on. Now, there was a comment that it's more dense than apartment complex. The R4 development regulations in the city allow 34 dwelling units per acre. So this is 12 times less dense than that, but significantly less dense than typical R1 and significantly less dense than existing R1 abutting us to the east.
Okay. David?
Well, just a few comments. First of all, I appreciate the comments to everybody. Both the homeowners and the developers have been trying to reach a compromise, and unfortunately, we're just not there. I do want to also express appreciation for bringing out the conditions of the roads in South Oklahoma City, both Portland Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue, and there's several other areas really need significant attention. On Portland, we've got a brand-new elementary school that'll open in August. And as Patricia mentioned, it's just a two-lane country road with no curbing. We really need to get monies out there. The same's going to happen with Pennsylvania. We, as we do our next bond election, South Oklahoma City really has to take, you know, a large portion of that focus when we look at roads throughout South Oklahoma City. Pat, so just to give you guys a heads up. But there are many roads. I don't... I'm not trying to support the developer in this comment, but to me, living in South Oklahoma City as long as I have, I don't think of this necessarily as sprawl. We are so used, even though we are on May Avenue, we're west of May Avenue, of driving to Moore, driving to Norman, this just seems like our big South Oklahoma City neighborhood, from my perspective. So the issue of sprawl, actually, had we developed these roads into four-lane roads several years ago, before the development took place, then I would say, yeah, we're inviting sprawl to take place. Just the opposite is happening. One of the problems we have is Moore Public Schools is the fastest-growing school district in the state. It's been that way for the last three or four years. It's a great school system. People want to live in this area of Oklahoma City and allow their children to have quality education. That's one of the problems we have in South Oklahoma City. I have seen some indications that Ward Five may be the fastest-growing ward in the city, outpacing Ward Eight, when we come to our next census in about five years from now. There's a lot of available space out there for development, and I think it's just going to continue to attract attention. We have seen a reduction in the density as far as it relates to Track Two, the smallest areas. Now, the smallest lot, as it abuts or is adjacent to these larger acreages, is 7,100 square feet, I believe. Is that correct, David?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As the mayor mentioned, I'm not a fan of masonry-type walls. I think the combination of a chain-link fence, similar to what we have around Early Wine Park, and I know of no instances of people scaling the fences, other than in appropriate use settings with a ladder to take care of weeds and things like that as it comes into the houses, people overcoming that barrier. And then you combine it with the shrubs and trees that'll be placed in this fifty-foot easement, which is as wide as a four-lane street. And in a more residential area, a four-lane street provides a buffer between neighborhoods to where we're not as concerned with the same size of lots. Finally, the old way of thinking in terms of lots, I think, is beginning to change. We live on a lot of about 8,000 square feet, and it's in a home that I consider very nice. But yet, homes like ours are now being built on lots smaller than that. My son just recently moved out to Knoxville. He's got a home bigger than ours, and it's on a smaller lot. They just don't provide much space in between these lots anymore. So with all that in mind, unless I can hear some comments, I would move forward with this, but I still will welcome any comments as it relates to a masonry-type fence. But I think, and David, can you speak to this issue? What we have currently with the proposal is there'll be a fence along the back line of all these homes that are being put into this development. Then there's a fifty-foot easement. And within this easement, there'll be trees and shrubs. And then there'll be this six-foot, what I call industrial-strength-type chain-link fence. And then there'll be these shrubs adjacent to this fencing. One of the problems we have with the masonry wall is, one, the oil company said they won't allow it. Secondly, if we make it, there's a concern that putting up, say, two walls or two significant fences will create a dead zone for this easement. People just throw trash in it. And that's not the desire of the development. It's to be used by the residents. So they want some access into this easement area, but yet still provide the security, you know, by preventing the residents of this new development to have access to these acreages through the chain-link fence and the shrubs and the trees and things. And I apologize for those of you who live in these developments, you know. I'm sure you're thinking, as I'm saying all this, that I really don't care. I do care about your situation. It's just from my perspective, this seems like a, a good way to protect your area in a least intrusive manner possible. I think you are going to have the security through this chain-link fence combined with the shrubs. You'll have the, the, you won't even be able to tell how many lots are being built because you just can't see through these hedge roads. David, what's the timing as far as putting in this fence, the shrubs, and the trees in this easement area?
We're willing to do the, the whole hedge row up front. And the fence up front. And as Richard said, you're looking at a, a multiple-year buildout, and the northeast corner, which has been the most concern, we believe, will be several years away. To answer your, your first question on how the easement would look, the way that they have their product and other, other additions is that the backyards have a four-foot split-rail fence with vinyl-coated chain-link to keep a dog in, but that way, it's open to that fifty-foot greenbelt. It becomes usable open space. And there's, each home has a little gate to get through, so they're, they're able to use that easement. Then you'll have the fifty feet. Then you'll have the chain-link fence and that hedge row.
Okay. One final comment, if I may, and Patricia, I'll, I'll let you make your comments. In the addition that we live in, Lakewood, they are just now beginning to start the final addition, which is about a hundred and fifty feet from our home. And so they've got the earth-moving equipment, they're putting in the roads, they're putting in the sewer and water lines into those houses. The only thing in between our house and this new development is a row of houses. They are working mainly just Monday through Friday during the workday. When I get home at night, there's no noise as a result of the construction. I know as the houses begin to be built, those laborers tend to work later, especially as we get into the summer months. But currently, even with the earth-moving equipment and the construction related to putting in the streets and things like that, my wife, who is retired and spends more time at home, has not noticed any additional noise. We've never heard anything while we're within our house as long as the windows remain closed. And again, that's at the height of any type of activity, a hundred and fifty feet away. Certainly at nights, we go out and enjoy our front and backyards without any problems. And we're in a fairly dense area. Just north of our addition is probably homes in the size of a thousand to twelve hundred square feet. And yet, we don't have any problems. We are within a block and a half of probably the busiest grocery store. That's the Crest Grocery Store at a hundred and fourth of May. We don't get any noise where we live from that activity. I appreciate your concerns, I really do, because I understand the lifestyle that you're currently accustomed to is probably going to change. But I don't think, in this instance, the change that is being proposed is the same as it being bad. It's certainly going to be different, and I appreciate change and, and the difficulty to adapt to change. But I don't think in and of itself, it's a bad thing. So with that, Patricia, would you?
Just a quick question. The homeowners are curious as to maintenance of this fence. I mean, as you saw from Mr. Newman's presentation, these, any growth is not guaranteed to grow. I know they have indicated they'll be there ten years, a development of ten years, but what happens in the fifteenth year or the twentieth year? How are these going to be? What's the plan for maintenance of this chain-link fence that will probably grow? You know, as he said, the hedge will probably grow through it. How is that going to be maintained? Because my experience with hedges in Early Wine is like that. They're constantly fixing the fence as growth knocks it down. I see it all the time. I live not very far from there and pass it all the time, and the fences appear to be a, a constant maintenance.
Well, David, can you address that?
Absolutely. All of Ideal Homes neighborhoods are mandatory HOA that are professionally run, and so this will be maintained by the HOA. It'll be irrigated in compliance with, with city codes, and therefore, it'll, we will ensure that it, it grows and is maintained in proper order.
Okay. And as it relates to Early Wine, the, the problem is when the trees have been planted too close. The shrubs themselves, I don't think have broke through and had any damage to the fence. And we live next to that. I mean, our backyard is adjacent to it, and we don't have any problems from that perspective. So Ed?
I just, I thought the pictures were powerful. I mean, what are your thoughts? Have you driven on that road? What are your thoughts on what would happen over the next ten years to that road?
Oh, okay.
As we, I mean, it seems like one part of sprawl is that you're subsidizing the development of, the development with city infrastructure.
Right.
Do you think we are going to need to replace that road?
Yes, definitely. And if I may just expand that a little bit. Ed, Portland Avenue, south of a hundred nineteenth Street is a similar type of road. It's a two-lane road, no curbing. And now that we have a elementary school coming online, the usage of that street will be even greater. Eric is working on a plan right now to make significant improvements, but that road definitely will have to come into the next bond issue. Pennsylvania will have to as well. Some of the east-west streets will need to be expanded. I'm talking in terms of a hundred and sixty-fourth, a hundred and forty-ninth, and other areas in South Oklahoma City really will need to have a lot of attention when we have our next bond issue. But there are ways to make the significant improvements to the streets as is without actually widening it or resurfacing it.
Do you know, I mean, for future development, and Kenny's not here, I mean, is there a way, if a street has a certain PCI, if it's degraded to a certain, and somebody wants to put development next to it, is there a way to incorporate that as a condition of a PUD or that they?
I'm not sure, Ed. I'd have to ask for some assistance.
Section Line roads are the city's responsibility to maintain. Whether you could get a developer to pay for that upgrade, I, I don't know the answer to that.
We have, Ed, we, we have been successful in several cases in southwest Oklahoma City, which also needs attention in the next bond issue, in negotiating in improvements, turning lanes and/or signalization. So it depends on what you're negotiating to a great extent.
Ward Eight has one project where we're cooperating with the developer to do a half-mile road adjacent to his development. It's a joint venture project. City's paying part of it, and the developer's paying part of it.
On Memorial and Rockwell?
Oh, it's, it's Rockwell.
Okay.
And, Ed, we've had, again, this isn't addressing your question directly, but we've had a good working relationship with the county of Cleveland County, and they've been very willing to work with us when we do make improvements to the roads to provide often the labor and material and, and the equipment, and we provide the materials as we make repairs. So often, it's a joint project.
All right. We have a motion on the table for approval. We have a motion. Any other comments or questions from council? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 882 is a zoning case in Ward Seven at 1415 Northeast Sixty-third Street. It's currently a planned unit development and an urban conservation district, and it would become a new simplified planned unit development. John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see the applicant is present. I want to ask the applicant to please come forth. There's been, the Neighborhood Association for Seminoles, and the applicant has been working hard on this for a year. As you can see, it was deferred several times, and it now comes in front of us. The, the packet says there is protest, but a few weeks ago, we conducted a community meeting in regards to this application, and there is no protest. Go ahead, Mr. Box.
Thank you. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I'd like to first thank Councilman Pettis for, for your involvement in this. When we first sat out to do this project last May, there was significant protest. But we've been able to work with the councilmen and the neighbors, and they're now on board. My client, Jenny Daughter, is, is also with us here today, who owns Cole's Garden. What she's proposing to do is, is to build a, a new office building on the Cole's Garden property. She owns a wholesale insurance company, and she wishes to put her, her business on the property. It'll be a single-story, but what she wanted to do was, was match the materials and the beautiful design of the Cole's Garden facility that's already in place. So what you see before you now are the renderings of the new building that'll match and be in conformance with, with what's already there. And what we've done is a spud that'll only really allow the uses that she needs for her building. So it's essentially a decrease in intensity in the zoning. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, as well as Jenny.
Okay. Quick question. The hours of construction?
Eight to five. And we're willing to add a TE to that effect.
Okay. Can you add the TE to that effect?
Yes, sir. We will amend the spud accordingly.
Okay. Excellent. All right. And then the entrance and exits will be solely on Sixty-third Street, correct?
Yes, sir.
No lotty and no prospect. Correct.
That is correct, and we've amended the spud to that effect.
All right. I move for approval. All right.
Moved and seconded with the amendments as noted. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And thank you to the Neighborhood Association, and also thank you, Ms. Woods, for working together.
Item 8B is for some alley work in Ward Seven. John, you okay with this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is in reference to the GE of campus. So I am okay with it. I see the applicant is present. I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on 8B. It passes unanimously.
And then, do I need to do another motion for the emergency?
You can do that.
I move for emergency.
All right. We're voting on the emergency, and it passes nine-zero.
This is a zoning case. She has to speak on the emergency.
All right. Fannie, come on up. We just now got it, Fannie. We didn't get it in time, but. We'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Fannie Bates. I live at 943 Northeast Sixteenth Street in Oklahoma City. This council has been destroying the black community one house at a time, one building at a time, one block at a time for forty years, and I don't understand why all of a sudden this has to be an emergency. I don't see why we can't have time. I would like to take this to the NAACP and see if they have any objections. Some of these places that mean nothing to you have historical significance to some people who live in this town. And I would also like for my pastor to know what's going on, Jesse Jackson. And so I am asking you to give us some time till the next council meeting to look at this and see if there's any historical reasons why this should not be destroyed.
All right. John, do you want to reconsider your motion for the emergency?
No.
Okay.
Move the emergency.
Okay. Have we already voted it in?
No.
Okay. Voting on the emergency. Emergency passes eight-zero. All right. Run to item 8D. This is the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak, and are any item listed under 8D?
8C.
I skipped 8C. All right. Item 8C is a zoning case in Ward Three. It was recommended for denial at planning. The address is 809 North Tulsa. It's currently R1 single-family and a manufactured mobile home park and an I-1 light industrial district, and it would become a new moderate industrial district under I-2. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, has anybody signed up to speak on this? Okay. Normally, when that occurs, I just kind of move for approval, but this has, I think you need to know some of the history on this. So the applicant is present with his representative. And if you would, just give the council a brief overview on, on where we were and where we are today, and then we'll take any questions the council may have, if that's okay, Your Honor.
Thank you. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Also with me is Blair and Brad Nafe. Councilman, I appreciate the opportunity to, to address this case. This is a case where you, you see the outlined area to be rezoned, and what you see around it is other parcels that are currently zoned industrial. What this zoning case would allow is the expansion of a distribution warehouse. One of the issues that, that came up at Planning Commission was traffic along northeast Eighth Street.
Northwest.
I apologize. And a primary concern was the, the house on the corner of northwest Eighth and Tulsa, being the northeast corner. And what you see in your packet that I've given you that has the, the Google drive-by screenshot is the current existing condition, and there's been some problems with the curb. So what my client has, has agreed to do, and he's worked with the neighbors extensively over the past couple of months, and even as late as yesterday, if you turn the page over, it reflects what my client is proposing, and that is raising that curb level, adding some significant landscaping. If you turn the next page, it shows the, the south side of the street. And then one more turn, and you'll see what we're proposing on, on that side. In addition to that, there are several other industrial users in this area. So my client reached out to, to those folks and made sure that there was not just an effort on behalf of them to avoid Eighth Street, but it was a coordinated effort with all the other industrial users to make sure that access on Eighth Street as a, as a through street did not happen. My client actually rented or purchased some video equipment and put a camera up for a 24-hour period on the highest-intensity day that they have. What they found was there was two trucks that came from Portland down Eighth to access their facility. They handled both of them and let them know that that was no longer acceptable. We've also been able to form a relationship with one of the neighbors to the point where the neighbor has emailed Mr. Nafe and told him when there was a problem, and Mr. Nafe dropped what he was doing, chased down the truck, and let him know, and know in certain terms, that that was not going to be appropriate, and that wasn't going to be happening at his facility. That neighbor is now reassured and appreciates the effort that he's done, and knows that he's got his email, and he can call him or email him if, if the problem continues to happen, and he'll fix it. So we think we've made significant headway with the neighbors, and I believe that's why now, today, you have no one that has signed up to speak.
At the, at the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant was not prepared for the discourse that took place, and it was quite a bit of emotion about these two lots. And in being sympathetic towards the neighbors, the Planning Commission voted to deny this. But Mr. Nafe and David have worked very hard with the neighbors, with the surrounding businesses. This is a challenging thing. The solution that's come up will actually improve the neighborhood and will allow the facility to be built on the recently acquired land, which was at one time a mobile home park, which has now been purchased and will be converted into the warehouse that you see the picture of. And so while I personally do not partake of the product that Mr. Nafe serves, everything is legal the way it is right now, and unless the council has some objections, I move for approval.
All right. Comments or questions on item 8C? The motion is to approve. Cast your votes. And it passes seven-zero.
Thank you.
Item 8D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak, and are any item listed under 8D? All right. How about a motion, then? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak, and are any item listed under 8E? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. We're on to item 8F, and this has to do with the consolidated plan.
And Steve Rhodes is here today to go through a presentation explaining to us what is included in the comprehensive plan. Consolidated plan. Consolidated plan.
environment, and expand economic opportunities principally for persons of, of low and moderate income. It's implemented annually by a, uh, annual update to that five-year strategy, and today, you know, we're asking you for consideration of the, uh, Fifth Action Year of the Consolidated Plan. We'll begin a new plan next year. Um, the Fifth Action Year Plan also amounts to the application for the four formula-based grants that are administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. They include the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships Program, Emergency Solutions Program, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. Uh, by far, the, the larger of those grants is the Community Development Block Grant. Uh, the Home Investment Partnership, uh, Program is the, the second largest, and the other two programs are, uh, around a half a million dollars, and, uh, the other, the Emergency Solutions Grant is about, uh, a little over 300. What's happened over the term of the Consolidated Plan is that the city's, uh, normal allocations are down about two and a half million dollars from, uh, 2010. Uh, that is in aggregate among all formula-based grant programs. Uh, specifically for each, each grant program, uh, the block grant, we're looking at about 4.3 million dollars in, in our allocation this year. Again, uh, it is down about 1.3 million dollars from, from, from 2010. Uh, the Home Investment Partnerships Program is, is down about 1.4 million, or, excuse me, 1.2 million dollars, uh, or basically 41% uh, since 2010. Uh, Emergency Solutions Grant, it kind of grew. It used to be, in 2010, it used to be called the, um, Emergency Shelter Grant, and, uh, in 2011, they added, uh, a, a program for rapid rehousing of, of persons threatened with homelessness, and, uh, so they actually put a little bit more money into that program, and it's up about $130,000 from, from, from 2010. And HOPA, uh, the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program, it really does fluctuate typically at no more than about $25,000 annually, so it, it really has remained fairly stable. You'll see one bump in this year between last year, and that, that reflects the, the federal sequester, uh, that occurred last year. The funding was kind of restored to those programs this year. We have a, uh, a, uh, citizen participation process for the development of the Consolidated Plan that really is a little bit more rigorous than what's required by, uh, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We kind of back into this schedule annually. Uh, our program year is, it coincides with the city's fiscal year, so we need to have our Consolidated Plan reviewed, developed, and adopted by May the 15th, so that HUD can have a 41-day review period, uh, before they give us, uh, a, a grant award. Process really starts out about the first week in April. We have a citizen input meeting prior to us engaging in the development of the plan. We've had two meetings in front of our Citizens Committee for Community Development. It's not reflected there, but we had a meeting in January, uh, the third Tuesday in January, to kind of review with them the comments that were received during the, our citizen input process, our citizen, uh, input meeting, and to devise projects and programs that would address those needs that were, uh, you know, brought to, uh, to the front. Uh, they recommended approval of the Consolidated Plan as it was proposed in February, and was brought to the City Neighborhood Conservation Committee of Council for their consideration in early March. We are required, uh, they also recommended approval for that, uh, of, of the proposed programs. We are required to have a 30-day publication to, to bring in additional comments from, from the, from the community, and that progress, that, uh, comment period was initiated on March 27th and expires today, uh, with your consideration of the Consolidated Plan. What do we do with the money? Um, essentially, we do housing rehabilitation, uh, uh, three different types of programs. We assist, uh, the, uh, Public Housing Authority with, uh, modernization of public housing units. We have a housing exterior maintenance program for assisting owner-occupied housing that may have code violations. Uh, we also assist the Community Action Agency with their emergency home repair program. So if there is life or health-threatening issues, then we will help, uh, Community Action Agency will help that, uh, very low-income household typically, uh, address those, those issues. We have a strong neighborhoods initiative program that we've talked about, uh, considerably, three different target neighborhoods, where we are kind of holistically trying to address needs in those neighborhoods, whether it be infrastructure, whether it be public services, or, or housing rehabilitation activities. Sheriff Air Program provides bus tokens and taxi fares for homeless persons trying to access services that they need, uh, as well as provides taxi fares for, you know, seniors and persons with disabilities to get to the locations they may need to go. That's primarily used, uh, by, uh, visually impaired, uh, clients in particular. Community Action Agency assists us with a graffiti removal program, where they will provide paint and materials for neighborhoods in these target areas, uh, to, to cover graffiti tagging. Uh, and they also provide a, uh, a small business training program for us. It's about a six-week course, and once, uh, prospective business owners are, or trying to expand, business owners who are expanding their businesses, once they complete the course, they'd be eligible for economic development assistance provided by the, by the agency as well. We assist the housing, uh, uh, excuse me, the Urban Renewal Authority in disposition of properties, uh, as well as, uh, trying to remove blight in some of the, uh, urban neighborhoods that, uh, that they've been authorized to work in, and we do an affordable housing program where we try to expand the, the, the inventory of affordable housing, uh, primarily through, uh, rehabilitation with the block grant. Home Investment Partnerships Program, it's, uh, like the name says, it is all about housing, and with that program, we provide down payment assistance. Again, we do more housing rehabilitation. The difference between housing rehabilitation with block grant and home is that once we touch a house with a home dollar, we have to bring the entire property up to code. With a block grant, we can address one particular need, whether it be a roof or whether it be a siding issue, we can address that need and not have to address the rest of the property. With a home program, we have to do the whole house. It's got to be entirely up to code. Again, we, we're, uh, investing more of the home dollars in, uh, to further the goals of the, the Strong Neighbors Initiative. Again, it would be more housing rehabilitation and, and new housing construction activities. The home program has a 15% so, uh, set aside for community housing development organizations. Those are neighborhood-based nonprofit organizations who are constructing and rehabilitating housing, again, in, in targeted neighborhoods. And we have an affordable housing development program where we're trying to assist, uh, primarily, uh, low-income housing tax credit pro- projects. Uh, they, they do create a, a larger number of, uh, housing units, uh, than, than the home program can, particularly as, you know, the home program funds have declined over the last, uh, four to five years. ESG Emergency Solutions Grant, um, they provide funding for shelter operations, again, rapid rehousing of households that was, you know, expanded in 2010, uh, to, you know, to, to prevent homelessness. Uh, it's easier to manage the problem, uh, if we can help upfront before they, they actually become, uh, homeless, um, as well as to provide, uh, essential services like healthcare and other types of needs that the homeless persons might be needing. And the HOPA allocation is primarily used for tenant-based, uh, rental assistance for persons with AIDS and their family, um, provide emergency housing. We help them identify locations to live, uh, so those are some of the, the types of activities that are, that are under the HOPA program. And again, we, we have a, a strong partner in HUD, and we appreciate the technical assistance and the funding they provide to us to take and provide these, these necessary programs. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions for Steve?
I have a question for Pat and Larry. I mean, as, as we're seeing some of the funds for affordable housing decrease, and we're, I'm just, and I know you've both invited me to go to the Economic Development Trust, and, and I'll do that eventually, but as we, as we see projects like this morning, where we had $4 million in grants for residential apartments, uh, with TIF funds, um, is it possible to, as many cities do, have as a condition of those TIF funds, some affordable housing component with the development? Brent told us today that he was trying to get to a return of investment of seven of eight, or eight percent. Eight percent sounds pretty good, especially if the stock market ever goes down. Six or seven percent might sound good. Is it possible, has that been talked about in the past? Is that possible going forward to incorporate that into some of these TIF developments?
I think it already is.
Okay.
My understanding, in their financing operation, they have to allocate so many apartments and apartment complexes to, uh, lower income, and they can't identify those. They can't have a different colored door on it, for instance. But if they're, they're just in there, and it's part of the, the financing arrangements they have with government, guaranteed loans, whatnot.
Well, the, the two that we approved today didn't have any...
Yes, they did.
It did?
I think they did.
Okay. My understanding is it didn't, but I could, I could certainly be wrong. But that's, that's part of the...
Yeah, the, 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 normally their financing document will contain those restrictions.
Okay.
Ed, I know that Gary Brooks' development at Bricktown...
Absolutely. Right.
Includes affordable housing, and that was, I think there's some HUD dollars in that project.
Right.
Which would require that.
Right.
Would it be advantageous, Mayor, to have Brent come in if he's here and just speak to that question right quick? To Brian?
We sure can.
Steve, in the meantime, it's been a long time since I sat on your Citizens Committee for Community Development. Remind, do we, um, receive or recapture any dollars from Urban Development, uh, the Urban Development Authority when property sells?
We do.
Does some of that come back?
What we do, um, is, whenever we're budgeting actually for the Consolidated Plan, we try to forecast how much earnings we're going to receive during the year, and we've tried to program that during the Consolidated Plan, uh, process, uh, development process. We also have programs that are actually completed, and any money that they do not use, we recapture and again reallocate through this process. Uh, with regard to the Urban Renewal Authority specifically, they do provide probably the largest amount of money to us, uh, whenever they, uh, dispose of properties, particularly in certain areas, uh, they are required to give us all the money back, and then we go ahead and reallocate through this process as well.
How about the Section 108 loans? Are we still, do we have the capability to make those anymore?
We do. And there are, we have one outstanding loan right now to HUD. We, Section 108 program is where we actually borrow the money from HUD, and then, so we're obligated to repay those dollars. The loan fund that we have has a portfolio of four loans in it. One of them is for the Embassy Suite that's growing out of the ground now. We have a Shepherd Manor, an, an assisted living center that, that is, is trying to get up and running right now. We have Camelot School, which, uh, is, is a, a school that works with, uh, children, in-house treatment, children, uh, and we have one called Commercial Concepts, which is a commercial manufacturer of, of cabinetry. And we have a couple of other loans that, uh, we are looking at right now and trying to underwrite, and once they get, uh, once we're comfortable with them, we will, we will amend our Collins, our Consolidated Plan and bring those to the council for that amendment and authorization to proceed with an application to HUD, and, and that, you know, that may be forthcoming in the next few months.
I'm really glad to hear that there is the opportunity for some new projects to come forward. There was a while that...
Yeah.
It felt like every dollar we had was already pre-allocated.
Yeah. Whenever we do 108 loans, our, our goal is always to get our money back and, uh, to retire the debt. That, that's the way it, it should work, and in some cases, we do use a block grant to pay off a 108 debt, but most of the time, we are trying to provide good loans that will amortize.
And a third quick question. Do you manage the remaining funds in the Mura Relief Fund, or is that...
Yes, we, we still manage those funds.
And roughly how much, uh, many dollars are still in there?
Right now, uh, the loan fund is pretty much borrowed out at the moment, but it generates about 24 grand a month, 25,000 a month, and so we will be making more loans as, as the, the principal balance in the loan fund increases. We've made a few loans this past year, and so that's why it's kind of, kind of been exhausted for now, but there for about a three-year period, we weren't making loans, and so we had a significant amount of money built up, and, and those funds have been lent over the course of the last, roughly 12 months.
Thank you, Stevens. One more.
All right. Any questions for Brian?
Uh, yes, I, I believe the question was, are the two deals that were here before you today, did they include low-income housing as a component to them? And the answer was no, they do not. They were all at market rate.
Is that, is that something that, that traditionally is, is discussed or negotiated, or...
Uh, we've had discussions with some developers about that, but typically what happens when you have the low, um, income housing requirement in there, the, the TIF amount will subsequently be increased because it's all driven by the, um, return on investment. So they would have lower rents, which would mean lower bottom lines, which would mean they would require, if they want to get the seven or eight percent return, they would ask, they would need more additional TIF funds.
Could, I mean, could, is, is eight percent, eight percent seems high to use taxpayer dollars to ensure an eight percent return on investment. I mean, is six, seven unreasonable?
They can, I, I think, uh, it, it depends on the, the developer and the, and the appetite for their returns. I mean...
We're not insuring a return.
No. No, sir, we're not.
There's risk.
There's no insurance.
Not insuring, but you're with, making the pro firm, pro forma. Yeah.
I mean, there's risk.
Right.
Okay.
All they get is, all they get is the opportunity to...
Right. Okay.
Um, anything else for Steve? All right. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to item 8G. It's a series of revocable right-of-way permits. The first is from the March of Dimes Foundation.
The March for Babies, Main Street, area of the... Anyone here hoping to speak on this item?
Well, yes. Uh, my name is Tim Miller. I live at 13802 Crossing Way East in Edmund, which actually is in Oklahoma City. Um, I'm a lifelong Oklahoma City resident. I enjoyed seeing Bill City this morning. He and I both graduated from Northwest class and in the same class, so he's, he's a good guy, as you know. Um, I'm also a longtime March of Dimes board member since 1982. The March of Dimes March for Babies is coming up this Saturday, May 3rd. It is, every March of Dimes chapter across the nation is having their March for Babies at this time, either the end of April or the 1st of May. Ours traditionally is the first Saturday in May. Uh, we've been working very closely with Josh Ryan, uh, in coordinating this event like we do every year, and also Lieutenant George at the Bricktown Station to coordinate, uh, traffic and safety and, uh, control of the intersections, uh, as we march. Uh, the mission of the March of Dimes, as you probably know, is to prevent birth defects and infant mortality and premature birth. We, uh, expect about 3,000 walkers this year. Fortunately, the weather looks very favorable for us, so we're, we're happy about that. Uh, I say, no, we expect about 1,000 walkers this year. Those walkers are made up of corporate teams, family teams, and individuals, a little, little bit of everything. Uh, our goal this year, our income goal for this event is $300,000. As a matter of fact, today, as we're speaking, is what we call Bank Day, and a lot of companies and individuals are bringing the money that they have raised to turn in, uh, at the bank, uh, so we can get all that hopefully accounted for even before the event happens. Uh, the, the route itself is a two-mile route. Once again, we're at the Myriad Gardens, where we've been for several years. Back in the old days, when I was a lot younger, we had this event at Lake Hefner, uh, which was, finally became quite a chore, and we moved downtown to the Myriad Gardens, which has been a great location for us. We had to move away for a couple of years due to, due to construction, uh, but we're back at the Myriad Gardens for the second year in a row. Um, it's about a two-mile route. We'll go north from the Myriad Gardens, uh, we'll go north to Sixth Street, and then basically come back to the Myriad. Uh, at, at the end of the, of the walk, we always recognize corporate teams, individuals who have raised money. Of course, we have them in different categories, uh, so we give everyone the recognition that they deserve. It's a great event. Uh, the walk starts at nine o'clock, and we're usually out of the Myriad by 12:30 or 1:00. So that's a very quick overview, but I'll entertain any questions if anyone has any questions.
Well, thank you very much for bringing everybody starting and finishing at the Myriad Gardens. It's a perfect venue to do that. Josh, if everything's cool, I would move approval.
I have a question for Josh. I, I noticed in the, this one and the next one, we're, we're holding walks downtown on the same day, and one of them is using Sheridan, and the other one's using Reno. I'm just...
They got very close.
They got very close. We found a way to balance the traffic control plans between actually three events that day. There's one that's going to be happening, the pub run's going to be happening a little bit later in the day, thankfully, but the Autism Peace Walk and this walk are going to be very close, but we found a way on EK Gaylord to flow traffic north and south, so that there's some workarounds there, some rerouting.
Okay. All right. And are these all taking place in the morning, or the afternoon?
The two, the Autism Peace Walk and the March for Babies are happening in the morning, yes. The pub run is in the afternoon.
All right. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and let's vote. Cast your votes on item 8G1. It passed unanimously. Item 8G2 is a request to hold the Autism Peace Walk. It's in Ward 6 and 7, and looks like we have someone who has signed up to speak. Melinda Loffenberger?
Yes.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm Melinda Loffenberger. I live at 2801 Northwest 154th Street. And I'm the executive director and founder of Autism Oklahoma. Our official name is Oklahoma Family Center for Autism. I have a 21-year-old daughter who is a college student at UCL who has autism. And we have another daughter who lives, another adopted daughter who has autism who lives with us also. We have this event every year. It's the fifth year, and our organization has been working with Josh also for the traffic issues and all of that. It's a combination walk, one-mile fun walk, and a 5K.
And it's in Ward 6 and 7. Two of you'd like to comment?
I'll move for approval.
Now, a second.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8G3 is a request from Whiskey Chick's Parlor to establish some outdoor beer and food service in Bricktown. Kevin McCracken?
Well, good morning. My name is Kevin McCracken. I'm the owner and operator of Whiskey Chick's Parlor in Bricktown, and we're proposing a outdoor patio. We can do food and beverage service. It's on the south side of the building. There'll be a, the patio will not be attached to the building at all, or the floor. It is a revocable permit, and we're hoping that you guys will approve us.
This is on Reno, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and what are the hours? Will this be the same hours as your bar and restaurant?
Uh, yes, sir.
So is that the 2:00 AM?
Uh, no, only 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturday nights. Typically, we're closed by 11, 12 o'clock during the week, closed on Mondays.
Yeah, I noticed this was for a year. Josh, would this come back to us next year? If it doesn't seem like a good idea a year from now, we'll have a chance to review it again. It won't be automatically renewed. Okay. All right, I'll...
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing that the Fire Marshal Plan and Police Public Works reviewed it, as well as Bricktown Association, as well as the ABU Commission, I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8H is a salary continuation for a firefighter. I understand we do not need executive session. Meets the requirements? Do I have a motion from council? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8I, has that already been struck, or do we need to strike it?
It's been struck.
Okay, it's been struck previously. Item 8J, understand we do not need executive session, so how about a motion to strike?
Motion to strike.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On to 9, which is items from council. Pat, you want to get us started today?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to compliment the organizers of the marathon, Memorial Marathon last week. This is the first year we've had that. I haven't received any complaints about traffic being obstructed. I think it's a compliment both on the organizers and that our city involvement as well, we've taken those things into consideration. Because there were two big events that impacted the north part of Oklahoma City, the Memorial Run and the Red Bud Classic, and they both were handled very well this year, and I think it's a compliment to our state staff as well.
All right, thanks, Pat. And you and Councilman Shadid are co-sponsoring item 9A?
Yes, sir, and I'd like to suggest a minor change amendment to, in the Section 2-37A. We, I'd like to go instead of the first degree, to the second degree, and that is, makes it a little bit broader in terms of the relatives that are allowed to make contributions, about any kind of reporting possible.
Okay. You okay with that? All right, so that's a motion and a second. We'll be voting on the amendment first. Cast your votes on item 9A1, and it passes eight to one, and then we're voting on the ordinance itself.
I move the ordinance.
Okay, cast your votes, and it passes eight to one. Item 8, or rather, 9B is a public hearing, what we've, friendly nature, called the Chicken Ordinance, and kind of come up with by Councilman Salyer and co-sponsored by Councilman Shadid and Councilman Huang.
My favorite thing is the new tweet string that's going around with the hashtag fluck. I really like it. I do have a request to add some language today, if we could, very simple, and it's under item C3, which currently reads, chickens shall have access to an unpaved outdoor roaming area of at least eight square feet per animal, and my request is to add, and such area shall be enclosed to confine the chickens. We somehow had a little gap here, and we didn't have fencing required. And rather than require somebody to fence their yard, I think we need to just be sure that the enclosed area in which they are kept...
Right.
Is enclosed. And I've spoken with Sarah Brayden, and she concurs with that language addition, I believe. Sarah, is that okay with you? That would be my suggestion.
One point, the city clerk pointed out that this is just on for a public hearing today, so we can put that amendment on to be added to it for next, for the final hearing.
Bring it back next time with that addition.
Correct.
So eight chickens, so it'd be 64 square feet enclosure?
If you wanted to have six chickens.
Oh, sorry, six.
You're not required. I mean, that's...
So 48 square feet enclosure.
Right. If you have one chicken, you just have to have four feet.
Or eight feet?
Right. You have to have four square feet, yes, of space per chicken. So if you have one chicken, you have to have four square feet.
Okay.
If you have six chickens, you have to have 48 square feet.
Okay. And just your fence in your backyard does not count? Is that enclosed? Is that what I'm hearing, or...
It would count. It would count.
The fence would count.
Right, okay.
We're just trying to prevent, you know, we were trying to say you don't have to enclose your entire yard if you enclose the space in which the chickens are kept.
Got it.
And they're currently, I mean, it, the way it's written right now, it would be a violation of Chapter 8, which relates to animals, if you allow domesticated fowl to run at large out in the community, and they could be confiscated, but Charles in code enforcement is really concerned about how complicated that is. And so if we could just require that the, at least the area in which the chickens are kept is enclosed, I think it solves a lot of future enforcement problems. So I'd recommend that we add that language when we bring it back for the final.
All right. This is a public hearing. We have a number of people that have signed up to speak. You guys want to say anything before? Okay. Clement Brayden? I'll ask everyone who's coming forward to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Morning, Clement. You might want to pull that mic down, and then give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Clement Brayden. I live at 1143 Northwest 38th Street in Oklahoma City. I think that, I'm very glad that we can have backyard chickens with a permit now. I think that's a very good thing, because they give you fresh eggs, which are very healthy, and they also come from happy chickens, which is, can be very different from store-bought eggs from big corporations. They're, also, the noise is not a huge deal. They do not make very much noise. The noise is mostly from loosters, which you do not, which I do not think should be included in the permit. They also make very good pets, and they're very nice to humans, and they give good, hands-on experience for young people. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Clement. Catherine Gant?
Hello. My name's Catherine Gant. I'm from 3701 Northwest 67th Street in Oklahoma City. I'm also speaking today as a representative of the Urban Agriculture Coalition that has built up over the last year, and I'm also an adjunct instructor at OSU OKC in horticulture. Mainly just wanted to say, you know, on New Year's Eve, this council gave the urban egg, gave urban agriculture a unanimous vote of confidence. And so on behalf of the coalition, we just want to thank you for that. Since that vote, the members of our coalition have witnessed a huge surge in interest and an outpouring of support. And as a result, we planned a bunch of activities for 2014, including an urban agriculture film series. We're coordinating with businesses and organizations downtown to do that. We're also going to have an urban gardening community brainstorming event and an urban ag festival this fall. So we are off and running, and so we appreciate your support. And our further thanks and gratitude go to the councilors who recognize that there is yet a missing link in the landscape of urban gardening, which are the hens, and who brought the issue back to, back for a vote today. And we appreciate the efforts of the councilors who asked the planning department to design a process so that urban hens can dwell legally in our backyards. And we would also like to thank in advance the other council members who are going to vote to help the hard-working urban gardeners get a little bit of rest now. So we appreciate, we appreciate that. And we're just looking forward to catapulting Oklahoma City to the next level of urban agriculture and making our city an even better place. So, thanks.
You bet. Thanks, Catherine. Sarah Brayden?
Sarah Brayden, 1143 Northwest 38th Street, Oklahoma City. I, I think that, I have some reservations about the permit process. I'm, I have some concerns that Planning Commission has not been able to answer, and also the Board of Adjustments has not been able to answer about, you know, what, how, how well the process is going to work, but I think it's, you know, certainly a good, good start, better than nothing, and so I hope, you know, I look forward to, I hope that everyone will vote yes for the permits. And I plan to go to Board of Adjustment meetings, where people are applying for a backyard chicken permit and see how it goes, you know, not only for myself, but for other people, and make sure that there aren't any problems, you know, with neighbors who just want to retaliate against someone for an old grudge or something, you know. I hope that doesn't happen, but I'll find out, and if there are a lot of problems, I'll come back here and let you all know. But I hope there won't be. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Fannie Bates?
My name is Fannie Bates, 943 Northeast 16th, Oklahoma City. First, I want to clarify what I said earlier. I did not mean this council had done things that have harmed people in the past. I meant historically, the city council had done things that have harmed people in the past. So, but I do want to say, I have a friend who's 83 years old, who lives in Norman, and he has hens in his backyard in a little cage, and it, it brightens his life so much. After every meal, he takes his little leftovers out there and gives them to the chickens, and he loves his chickens, and it's the only pet he can have. A lot of poor people cannot afford the dog food or the cat food to have of a dog or a cat, but if you have a chicken, they'll eat anything, and, and it's a friend for that senior citizen or the person who has a disability. Thank you.
Patty Cook?
Hi, I'm Patty Cook, K-O-C-H, 5101 Northwest 20th Street, Oklahoma City. And I guess I'm a minority today. I'm also president of Windsor Forest Neighborhood Association. I'm with WAND, and I'm with WABG, and I have moral support with, Linda Palmer is here. She is the president of Hillsdale Neighborhood Association. I know some of you like statistics, and I just heard I can only talk three minutes, so you're not going to get any statistics from me today. I think it's very admirable that a lot of people want to go back to raising chickens. I'm all for it. What I don't like, and what I have heard, is I think it should be kept like it is now at an acre. I sent out an email to over 1,000 people in Oklahoma City, and it wasn't just old retired people like me. It was, and people from All Walks Alive. I sent out to people as young as my children and grandchildren. I sent out to people, attorneys, doctors. I sent out to a lot of the people that are in county, city, and, and state government. Sent out to people that work in barber shops and floral. So All Walks Alive. I had 578 replies, well, I had two more this morning, so really 580. Of those, 537 definitely do not want chickens in their neighbor's yards. 43 said yes, that would be okay, and of those 43, 40 said if. And that seems to be a big word that we hear around here, if. And the ifs were, if they follow the ordinance, if they're clean. Because I heard from a lot, I don't know anything about farming. I'm not a farmer, but I heard from a lot of people that farm, yes, chickens are messy. Yes, they are smelly. Well, they're not if people keep it clean, just like with dogs, but, okay, who's, who's going to enforce that? My understanding is Charles Locke has 30 to 35 inspectors for 661 square miles. I'm thinking he's got morning to say grace over right now. Also, the inspectors cannot go in the backyard, so does that mean that there, if somebody next door has chickens and you have a problem with them, are you going to have to file a complaint and go to court? Those are just things that I think people need to think about. There's property values. I talked to realtors, and I want you to answer this to yourself honestly. You don't have to answer me, but answer to yourself honestly. Do you want chickens next door to you? If you went out to buy a home, and you had two homes that were comparable, price-wise and everything else, one was next door to chickens and one wasn't, which one would you choose? And I, and I'm serious about that. I talked to a lady that was very upset when they tried to sell their home. There were chickens next door. They took a loss on their property. So property value, I talked to some real estate agents because I was just curious. Real estate goes down, and it does. A lot of times, your real estate goes down because people do not want to live next door to somebody that raises chickens. I was going to ask about fencing, but I think Meg kind of answered that. We were kind of concerned about the chickens and what kind of containment there would be. I didn't know, and you probably laugh at this, I didn't know chickens could fly. So they can, if, if the, if the coops don't have chicken wire, I guess, over the top, they can fly out unless their wings are clipped. You may have already known that. An acre of land is only 4,000, 43,560 square feet, which isn't all that much, but you start putting chickens in a little, little confined area. And I know people say, well, I'd rather live next door to chickens than barking dogs. Well, you're talking apples and oranges. Dogs are domesticated. They bark, they smell, and I understand that, but we already have dogs. Do we need something else to add to this? I guess I'm going to lie, there are some statistics. I did look up in Ponca, Oklahoma, chickens must be kept 100 feet from a neighbor's house. In Stillwater, they have to be kept 150 feet from any house, and the minimum square feet for their, for poultry is 900. So I really don't understand why this has been brought up again when, when, once it was decided that we weren't going to do it. And I kind of feel like my daddy always said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. If the majority of people are against this, my understanding is this establishment is run by the majority. Most of you that are sitting up there, we're elected by a majority, then I thought the majority ruled, so. And I think my three minutes are over.
Marcy Roberts?
Hi, I'm Marcy Roberts. I live at 609 Northwest 47. I'm the current chair of Transition OKC, and we're a local sustainability group, just trying to be a catalyst to bring the Oklahoma City community to a more resilient, sustainable state. And we're doing a good job of it. In the last five years that we've been around, sustainability has just had a, it's just growing exponentially in this town, and your passing of a, of a new urban agriculture ordinance... ordinance really helped further that along, as will this chicken ordinance. As you can see, chickens are maligned. I mean, I think a lot of people have a lot of problems with roosters, but chickens themselves do so much good. They provide all kinds of compost for gardens, they eat all kinds of insects, mosquitoes galore. They're just maligned. And I think, I think, I hope you'll do some research before you cast your final vote later this month. So, after seeing how hens are treated by the industrial egg farms in documentaries like Food, Inc. and Fresh, many of us can't help but wish for a way to avoid supporting a system that cuts off the beaks of hens, confines them to tiny cages, and forces them to live out their lives without ever seeing the light of day. There's an alternative, but it can prove costly for some families. Those who want truly free-range, humanely and locally raised, farm-fresh eggs will pay $5 a dozen at the local farmer's market or the Oklahoma Food Cooperative. With a family to feed, this can quickly get expensive. In a city where poverty rate is over 17%, that affects a lot of families. So, the cost of cage-free, humanely raised eggs does not have to be a burden on the budget. With just a few hens in the backyard, cooks can whip up mountains of protein-rich omelets, quiches, and frittatas without fear of breaking the bank. Although some worry that residents will not know how to properly care for their hens, we believe that backyard hens are an antidote to the poor treatment inherent in the industrial egg system. Hens will get water, sunlight, fresh air, and the ability to walk around, a sharp contrast to the caged, filthy, and nauseating ammonia smell of factory farms that most grocery store eggs come from. As famed organic farming expert and author Joe Salatin would say, "Backyard chickens will be able to express their chicken-ness." And we, in the OKC Urban Ag Coalition, are ready and willing to provide online resources and local classes for people to learn to responsibly care for their hens. Eggs from backyard hens have also been shown to be nutritionally superior in several different studies because of the hen's free-range diet that includes garden pests, grubs, and kitchen scraps. We've been told for many decades by Big Ag that the egg is a perfect food, and we wholeheartedly agree. So, legalizing backyard hens will allow animal lovers to choose a humane way to raise eggs, allow egg-loving cooks and bakers with budget constraints to save money, and lastly, allow hens to quietly cluck to their heart's content in the green grass and fresh air of Oklahoma City backyards. Thank you.
Michelle Smith?
Hi, I'm Michelle Smith. I'm at 1606 Northwest 42nd Street. And I'm really glad that this might pass, and our family will definitely be applying for a permit if, if that comes about. There's two reasons why I'm happy about this coming about. It brings our family together, these hens, and it brings our community together. I have two young daughters. One goes to an Oklahoma City public school, and we have one in a private school. And I am an employee at OU Health Sciences Center, and my husband is an employee at Chesapeake Energy. And we get everybody out in the door in the morning, and we, we go and we make a living, and then we come home and we do those things that make life worth living. And our backyard and our gardens and our hens are a big part of that. We spend time as a family gardening, we eat the vegetables and herbs and fruits that we grow, and our, we have hens, and we eat their eggs. We eat eggs every day, and it's, it just makes a happy family, just a little part of our, our happy family. And it brings our neighbors together. We have neighbors on all sides of us, and they all know of our hens, and, and they support us. They, one lady on our, our left side, she gives us her egg cartons every couple of months, and I don't have the heart to tell her to stop giving them to us because we eat all of our eggs, so I just throw them away. But she comes over and visits, and so it's nice. The family across the street from us, they have grandchildren, and they bring them over occasionally just to give grain to the chickens, and we visit, so. Anyway, it's, it's just a small part of our life, but it's the small things that make living here in Oklahoma City good, so, thank you.
Thank you. Elia Woods?
Hi, my name is Elia Woods. I live at 1013 Northwest 32nd Street. I appreciate the considerable attention council has given this ordinance and, and the effort to accommodate a diversity of viewpoints. I'd like to read a statement from my young friend and neighbor, Benito. His statement. My name is Benito Santillan. I live at 808 Northwest 31st. I'm a ninth-grade high school student at Dove Science Academy. I can't attend council, city council today because I have to be in school. Here's the main thing I want to say. Chickens are very useful. I know because I took care of five hens in my backyard for five years. I got them when I was five years old. Chickens are great garden helpers, compost makers, bio-recyclers, and local food producers. I work with Closer to Earth, a nonprofit youth group. Chickens would help us a lot in gardening, recycling, and composting. Also, kids love chickens and eggs, which are a very healthy breakfast. When I was 10 years old, a possum killed them all, and then my family decided to get dogs. If you legalize chickens, I want to get some more. This time, I will build a chicken house the possums can't get into. Chickens are a great idea and should be allowed in the city. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And today is a public hearing, we're moving it forward. I don't see a date on here when this will come back to us.
It will come back next week.
Okay.
Well, actually, the next week will be May 13th.
May 13th is when we come back for a council vote on the issue. And I, okay. Motion in a second?
Second. I just had a question, and really it's for Kenny or anybody else that can answer it. When this would go before the Board of Adjustment and say that there was conflict between the applicant and their neighbors, is the Board of Adjustment weighing the merits of both sides, or is the Board of Adjustment simply determining whether the application is in conformance with this ordinance that we're passing? How, how does that work at the?
I think Kenny needs to come in and answer that. It's quasi-judicial, judicial process, as you, as you know. And if there are arguments made of why, legitimate arguments made, is why it would be inappropriate to a, a unique geographic layout or, or some other reasons, that, that, you know, I would think they would take those into consideration.
Okay.
If it's, I don't like my neighbor, I would guess that that probably wouldn't get as much consideration.
Okay.
Board of Adjustment makes those decisions every time they meet, based on the facts of the case specifically. So, that's certainly my assumption, is they'll weigh the, weigh the facts in each individual case and decide on its merits. But I can't speak for them legally.
Okay. Yeah, Larry?
Just wanted to make a comment. What I picked up this morning, there's a possibility, maybe I, maybe I was just being overly attentive, that some people are currently having chickens against the ordinance, the fact that they can't have them. And I find that a little bit questionable, that people would be disobeying the law and then coming here and extolling the virtues of, of violating the law. But that being said aside, I did have another conversation with a, through, through email, with a resident in one of the wards in Ward Three. And just for historical perspective, in case you haven't heard, the neighborhoods in Ward Three, the ones that I have heard from, with one exception, are very much opposed to having chickens in there. This particular neighborhood advocates that they think that the preponderance of neighbors in their neighborhood would be in favor of chickens. And so, I just throw out, I think I mentioned this several weeks ago, is there a possibility that you would like to consider, that if a neighborhood wanted to vote to have chickens, they could, they could do it, but that it would not be this blanket where every neighbor in every neighborhood could go and apply a permit? I think there's some logic in moving slow on this, and maybe if a neighborhood wanted to be the test case, they would be offered that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. And we're voting today to move it forward. Again, it'll come back on May 13th, and it passes unanimously going forward. All right, we're on to city manager reports, and we start with a presentation from SMG. Oh, I'm sorry, we're still on items from council. Tom, I, I got ahead of myself. Pat, I think you kind of went through, okay, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Arts Festival, I think, was outstanding this year. And, and what was so unique about this particular arts festival, they moved to be a zero-waste arts festival. And so, if the Arts Council can come together and start promoting zero waste, I think the city, we can too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Meg?
I get, Mayor, if I could just extend my compliments also, as Pat did, to the organizers and the staff at the Oklahoma City National Memorial. It was a very, very tense two hours between six and eight o'clock to decide whether we could run, whether the runners would be safe. And it was handled so professionally and with great grace and great thought, and in coordination with our city command post and, and all others. And it, you know, ended up going off without a hitch, and...
We got very fortunate.
We got very, very lucky. But they had a weather guy there with a computer, and it was done so professionally, monitoring lightning strikes, the distance, how frequently, watching it move north. You know, the overriding concern the entire time was for the safety of the runners and the safety of all the spectators. It was just, it was handled extremely well, and they deserve a ton of credit for pulling off just a great race and a fun party downtown afterwards. It was awesome.
David?
Again, congratulations to both city staff, but also all the volunteers. I think they have over 5,000 volunteers for the memorial, and they did a great job. And as Pat said, no major complications from a traffic standpoint, despite the memorial being delayed two hours. So, I think that's quite a statement for, again, the staff and the volunteers. And just a personal note of appreciation, for them to structure it in a way to allow people like me and our family to run in it, you know, in a, a group setting, it, it really does provide amateurs the opportunity to run with some very great professional runners who really know what they're doing. It just makes for a very enjoyable day. Thank you.
Pete?
For, to ask the manager to give us some kind of an update, not today, but in the future, on the status of the Boulevard. It's been a while since there's been any conversation about it, and I'd just like to know kind of what the timeline is and where, what the planning stage is, where we are.
Be pleased to do that. Mr. Flowers and I have thought about that issue last week, so please do that.
Larry?
Two words, thunder up.
Ed?
So, yesterday, we rolled out our new bus routes, and I just want to congratulate our new transit director, Jason Fairbrush, and the rest of the transit department. That seemed to go off without a hitch. I mean, obviously, there are some areas like the Paseo that has less coverage, that there's some sadness, but that's, we're basically doing an experiment based on the work of a consultant. The consultant indicated that the next priority was to try and get some kind of nighttime service, some kind of evening service. I know, I've spoken with Jason, and I know that in terms of, he's looking at different routes. In the past, we've successfully run experiments where we picked a line or two and then increased the frequency, and then ran an experiment for a year and saw what happened. I'm wondering, in listening to him, if we could, if we could do a similar experiment in the next year, and I see our, our big budget books there, and I know transit is last in early June, and I'm wondering if during that presentation, we could hear, if we would, it would be possible to do one or two routes as an experiment? And if so, what would be the, the route that would have the highest chance of success? Listening to Jason, it might be the ones, our busiest transit line, that pings east and west on 23rd Street, or maybe the new one that's on South 29th, or maybe both, because they don't have to go to the transit center, so you wouldn't have to have the personnel to staff that. So, that's just an idea, and I'd, I'd love to hear how much that would cost. I want to just finally echo what Meg and Pat's compliments to the marathon. Amazing that that many, more than 25,000 runners. I think the, the delay for an hour and a half or maybe complicated things, I, I have just gotten some, and I don't want to exaggerate, you know, but a half dozen Facebook messages, phone calls, emails about kind of a feeling, and this is the route of the marathon. And I just wanted to point out that for those in the Paseo, those between 23rd and 36th, there, you've got the, it running close to Walker there on, on the east, and then up and down, on, sorry, on Classon on the west. Then the south, you've got it going through Heritage Hills and Mesa Park. And then to the north, as it moves, starts to kind of go to the west through Crown Heights, there is some sense that that area is getting boxed in on all four sides, and it's impossible to move out. And using words like quarantine, again, I don't want to exaggerate, it's like four to six people. But I've heard this in years past, and I'm just wondering, as this gets bigger, I mean, 25,000 is one thing, what if this were 30, 35,000, you had additional weather delays? I'm just, I'm just asking that, that we take a look at that area in particular and how people are moving in and out during the day in, in that, in that area. Thanks.
Okay. James? All right. City Manager Reports?
Well, this morning, we have Gary DeJard here to talk about some of the activities at the, at the Chesapeake Arena, and also how they handle some of the setups between events. Is that, Gary?
Some of our fun facts and things that you don't really think about when you go to an event at the Chesapeake Energy Arena. Just very quickly, you know, we're on our 12th year of operation, and in 12 years, we've actually hosted and been host to an NBA team for eight of those years, which is astounding when you, when, when I think about that, it, it's amazing. It's already been 12 years, and eight of which we had an, have an NBA team. So, since 2002, we've, we've welcomed more than 10 million people, 10 million guests coming through our doors. Last year, we had a pretty good year in, in our overall attendance and event activity. We had, we were ranked by Poll Star Magazine as the 33rd highest in North America or in the United States in concert attendance. So far, for 2014, just calendar year, January, February, March in our first quarter, we're about 1.1 million people through the, through the arena through 2014. And then a couple of quick, fun facts on what we do and some of the volume of the food and beverage that we go through on, on each event. We go through approximately, on average, 60 kegs of beer at each Oklahoma City Thunder game. We do like it when they are either up by 20 or maybe down a little bit, or Old Number Seven Club is doing extremely well at halftime. So, we like to see those big leads. For the PBR, a lot of people wonder what we do to try to get ready for a PBR event and how we actually do that. And we bring in about 90 truckloads of dirt to put on the arena floor and then set the chutes and, and then get it all back out. This year, we had a very tight turnaround because our last performance was on Sunday afternoon that ended at 5:00. And then we had to clear the dirt out and be ready for a basketball game on Monday at 12:00 noon. We did not get the arena floor to start putting the basketball court down until 5:30 in the morning. So, we had about six hours to get all of our seats in, basketball court down, scorer's table in, building clean, and ready to go for a noon high school basketball game, which our staff was able to do. And then a couple of little tidbits of information for how much volume of hot dogs we go through, which are staples, and, and the concession sales are pretty much hot dogs, popcorn, and chicken strips, believe it or not, along with the beer. But we, if you stack those hot dogs, and, and we could bring, we could stack them up to the roof of the Chesapeake Arena, which is 98 feet, or the steel's 98 feet above the floor, three times and go up. Talked a little bit about sustainability. We do use 100% recycled paper goods in our restrooms, and if you take one particular item in our restroom and we rolled it all the way out, it would, the volume that we go through would reach from here to Boston, is how much we go through. A little bit of information about the people who are coming to our events. And this is basically through July 1st through the end of April, or, or actually, last week. We have 50,000 people that have purchased, individual people that have purchased tickets through the Ticketmaster system, specifically through internet and phones. Of those people who have purchased tickets, you, this is a breakdown of what the demographic looks a little bit like. So, we have 66% of those folks are married, 64% have kids, and we're split evenly, 50/50, male, female. If you look at the education level of... If you look at the education level of the, of our customer and our guests who are coming through, you can see that same thing with the preferred method of payment. Through the internet and through the web, the only options for payment are credit cards, so there's really no cash. The only place that we really take cash are at the outlets or at the box office. And then demographic of the age ranges. And you can see kind of where our customer base is and it's reflective of, of the events that we have as well as the income level. The only events that are not included in here specifically are Thunder events. This is for every event other than Thunder. This shows a little bit about where our ticket buyers are coming from in the MSA. And this one is by postal code or zip code. So the darker the color is a higher density and higher client or customer base than the, than the lighter. But you can see where, pretty much where everybody is coming who are purchasing tickets. And then we can expand that out a little bit to go almost coast to coast. And this shows a little bit larger area. We pretty much sell tickets to pretty much almost every state. The ones that are, that we sell primarily in Chicago or Massachusetts or California are usually ticket brokers. That percentage is fairly small in terms of the numbers of tickets that we sell, but we do draw from a pretty wide regional base for the events that we have. And so what you see here is a comparison of 13 and so far through first quarter of this year of what our attendance is and what the direct spending is. The direct spending calculation is what we submit to the Convention and Visitors Bureau at the bi-monthly meetings and it's based off of the DMAI averages that they use nationally, based on how many people are coming in from out of town or from in town. So far this year, our numbers are up by a good bit in terms of, specifically for the first quarter. Our attendance is up by approximately 100,000 and our direct spending is up by about approximately 25 million from last year. The biggest part of that is coming from the Division One National Wrestling Championships, which we hosted in March, where we had 93,000 people come through. Majority of those were from out of town. We had great contingent from Penn State, great contingent from Minnesota, great contingency that came in from Iowa. We had a big group from Cornell. It was a great event for us and hopefully we'll have that one, that one coming back. So what does it take to put on a typical event? So for an average event that we have at the Chesapeake, specifically for the Thunder, it takes approximately 872 people from our end to put the game on. And that's broken down through our employees in the box office, food and beverage, event services, which is our guest relations and security staff, as well as our arena operations staff. On food and beverage, you see the majority of, the majority of our employees are from, are made up in food and beverage between Saver and Levy. And approximately half of those numbers are from our nonprofit groups that work in our concession stands. So those, those folks that are working in our concession stands volunteer their time to raise money for their particular nonprofit group and we pay the group as a way to, for them to earn fundraising dollars. And so when we go from event to event, the magic behind it just doesn't automatically happen. When we, we get a lot of questions asked about how we go from an event to event, when does a concert load in? And this video will give you a little bit of a preview or behind the scenes look of what it takes.
What we call changeovers, converting from a basketball floor to a concert. We probably do 10 to 15 of those that are what we call the immediate turnarounds. We'll have an event the very next day. They're very labor intensive and a lot of planning goes into those as well. We know the Thunder's schedule, so for the most part, you know, when the season starts. So they, when we started our process, we're thinking, okay, what do we have to do to Concert ends at 10:45 and at that point, you're in the process of getting ready for, in that day, a basketball game the next day. So we know that the show's still going to take time to get all their equipment tore down and put it on a truck and get it out of the way. And so that takes a couple of hours. Once that happens, because it's our stage...
Yeah, we got an open one back here if you want to throw it on that.
Then we have to come in behind once it's cleared, remove the stage. So that may be somewhere around 1:00 AM in the morning. You know, we'll have anywhere from 50 to 100 people that we, we'll contract extra help to come in and help our staff. And it's quite a bit of, quite a bit of work to get all that done.
Just keeping track of everything that's going on at the same time. We're under such time constraints. There are just a lot of little projects that go on every time and troubleshooting. You can go ahead and move it, just put it right out here. We're going to break up into groups. There'll be one group working on seating sections. One group will start on the court. There'll be another group putting in some camera platforms and risers throughout the arena. And then myself and one other will start forward, lifting other seating sections in now.
We're going to spend the next, probably about an hour and a half getting the floor ready to go. When I say that, just prep, make sure the concrete floor is clean. We'll bring in the basketball court, lay that down. That takes up to three hours to lay that. Put all the side sections in, seating, put all the seating sections together. So hopefully by 8:00 o'clock the next morning, that is our goal, that when people walk in to do other things, set up to setting up television monitors or setting up the scoreboard and all those things, we can be ready for them to take on the next step. I think the misperception probably is just the amount of time and people think it magically appears. A lot of people think the floor is down all the time and you just cover the floor, you know, but we treat that floor like royalty, so to speak, because it's important for us. And, and again, the more events that we can do that way and the better we can do it. Obviously adds economic impact to the city and to, to the building. And in the end, we believe it helps everybody, including the Thunder organization.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for braving the tough weather conditions and coming out to Chesapeake Arena for tonight's NBA game featuring the Charlotte Bobcats and your Oklahoma City Thunder.
So that's a little bit of the secret sauce behind going to an event. The most recent one that we did, we talked a little bit about the Memorial Marathon this past Sunday. The registration for the Memorial Marathon was actually in the Cox Arena because we had the Oklahoma Dental Association in the exhibit hall. So we had everybody who was running in the race go through the arena to register. That registration ended at 6:00 on Sunday evening and the Barons played their second hockey game, their second playoff game, and we dropped the puck at 8:18. So we had to take all of the pipe and drape down, uncover the ice, put the seats back in. And we were ready to go for another hockey game. So that's kind of what our staff does. Really proud of our staff and what they've been able to do. And so a few other things that we have coming up, a few other events that we have coming up. We have the Backstreet Boys and Avril Lavigne. I have to make my commercial appeal here. We have Backstreet Boys and Avril Lavigne, Steely Dan. We announced Michael Buble yesterday, James Taylor. Walking with Dinosaurs is coming back to Oklahoma City. We're also hosting the Division One, for the first time, the Division One volleyball championships in December. We're also hosting the Division One Women's Basketball Regional next March. And tonight, Thunder Up. We got the Thunder playing game five. Happy to answer any questions.
Gary, you did mention the hot dogs and the beer, but the fact of the matter is you've done a good job of bringing in some other healthy options into the, to the arena. I mean, I know the...
We do have them. Yes, we do. And I have a list if you want to know what sells and kind of the volume that we do. So, yes, we do. We have, we have a nice variety and the feedback that we get on our mystery shops and our customer intercept surveys reflect that, that our ratings are pretty high and our, on the variety that we have to offer.
Gary, I didn't know about the nonprofit participation. Are they identified so that you would know who it was? You know, the Arts Festival does such a good job of that.
They do. They have, they have signs at, at the stands that, that tells you what the group is and...
I haven't been thanked yet, I guess.
The data that is there about out of town participants or where the, in attendance, you have that same data on the Convention Center?
This is generated through the ticket buyer when they buy online, so we were able to capture that. The information that we have from the Convention Center, we typically get from the meeting planner on where those folks are coming from or how many from out of town.
You track all that data in terms of attendance, where people...
Yes.
The, the labor that, that's doing that work all night long, apparent, I mean, I guess about a year ago, you moved from a New, a New Mexico company or what, what happened?
The, the staging?
Yes.
We did. We put on an RFP and we selected, we received four responses and we selected NRG out of, they're headquartered out of Phoenix.
And who was it before?
It was Theatrical Payroll Services of Oklahoma.
Okay. So, and that was unionized? This is non-unionized?
Um, I frankly, I don't know how many of the NRG employees belong to the IATSE. They, there are, I think there are some members that are, that are members of the IATSE that do work for NRG, but I just don't know how many of them.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Next up is the handing out of the budget presentation. We're going to, this will be short, but Doug has, has a few moments just to hit some of the highlights. I know it's, it's almost noon. But we, we'll get this out to you, hit the highlights and then we'll begin with the, with the actual budget hearings next week. And we'll have three budget hearings and then we'll come up with a calendar here in a few minutes. So with that, Doug?
Well, I'm pleased to be with you here this morning to present the budget to you and we recognized our staff earlier this morning, but I'm glad they're here as well. Again, for, for this presentation, I want to thank them for their, all their hard work to put this together. Hitting the highlights on the, on the budget, we're looking at adding 28 additional police positions next year, seven additional fire, 11 positions for the vacant and abandoned buildings program, 10 additional positions in utilities and nine additional position in parks and recreation. We'll touch on some more of the numbers and obviously the departments will also be presenting with more details on, on their budgets as well. As we look at...
Just skittering off for a second and go back to, and that slide, I want to point out that, that the, those are not, the utilities positions are not general fund positions. Those are paid for by the rate payers and there's a revenue source, we hope, to recover most of the abandoned buildings program because of the fees that are associated with that. So those are, those are a little bit different than just add on to the general fund, which some of the other positions fall into. So those, I just want to highlight those two categories.
I'd like to highlight one. I thought I asked for figures on what do we take to maintain the 40 additional police officers that we had last year. I've never gotten those and now I see 28 here.
Well, and, and I do have the cost here. If, if we were add 12 additional police positions, that would be about $800,000 per year. Then we'd also need to add vehicles for those, which would run another half million dollars or so. So, so that would be the cost to add, to get us to 40 additional police positions. When we look at the budget overall, our general fund budget totals $413.9 million. You can see that's just a small increase over our amended FY14 budget, but that amended amount includes the $8 million that was added for street and other capital improvements earlier in the year, as well as our purchase order rollover. If you compare the original FY14 budget to our proposed FY15 budget, it's an increase of about $13 million or a little over 3%. On the operating funds, there's a slight decrease in the budget to $221.6 million. The biggest area that changed there is the fire sales tax fund. Their budget decreased by over $3 million because they had budgeted some one-time expenses for the improvements or the construction of Station 26, SCBA replacement and planned support for the radio system upgrade that were budgeted in FY14. Non-operating funds saw the largest increase in their budget, MAPS III sales tax being the largest one there, which increased by over $38 million with more fund balance being budgeted for, as the projects progress there. The capital improvement projects fund also saw an increase of about $18 million as a number of projects that have been funded recently have not been completed, so their amount of carryover increased by about $17 million. So our non-operating funds total $465.7 million for a grand total of $1.1 billion for the FY15 budget. Since we're running late, I'll kind of go quickly through the strategic planning process. You all have seen this slide before, but really it's kind of a, we begin with our citizen survey that we'll be doing again this year that feeds into the council priorities that were last updated in 2012. Departments develop their strategic business plans based on those priorities. That feeds into our budget development and of course, all through the year, we're implementing the budget that you all adopt. We're collecting data on how we're doing, reporting on our performance, evaluating how things are going and making decisions on, on where we go next. Real quickly, the council priorities that were adopted in 2012 provide a safe and secure community, maintain strong financial management, promote thriving neighborhoods, develop a transportation system that works for all citizens, and support high-quality public education and community health and wellness. Once again, we're using the same little icons that we used last year throughout the budget book to denote those areas that support those priorities. So we'll look at the overall revenue picture. Again, $1.1 billion is our total budget. The largest category is taxes at about 52% or $570 million. Sales tax is the largest portion of that at $423 million. When we look at this overall budget, the other, the taxes category also includes property tax for our debt service fund and that totals $68.2 million. Fees and charges include things like franchise fees, business licenses, building permits, ambulance membership fees, stormwater drainage fees and account for about 15 and 1/2% of the total. Our transfers in are those transfers from our trusts that support water, wastewater, airports, solid waste. And fund balance is about two, I'm sorry, federal grants make up 2.4% of our budget. And then fund balance is a fairly large chunk when we look at the overall budget of $232 million. And the two largest areas again are MAPS III, which budgeted $95.7 million in fund balance, and our capital improvement projects funds at $49.5 million. As we look at the operating revenue, again, this narrows it in a little bit and again, taxes are the largest source there. Sales tax being again, the biggest at over $315 million, the total. Other significant taxes in this category are use tax, hotel motel tax, and the portions we receive from the state for, from tobacco excise, alcohol beverage, motor fuels and commercial vehicle taxes. We'll move ahead on to the general fund revenue. Again, narrowing it down now to our, our largest fund and the most, but, but again, where we focus most of our attention, taxes are 65% of the total. Sales tax specifically is at 52.8% or $218 million. The primary area and other taxes is our use tax, which is at $39 million. Franchise fees are 10%. Those are the fees that come from utility companies that pay for their use of rights of way. Fines total about $26.4 million. Fees and charges for building permits, administrative charges, those sorts of things make up about 16.7%. And then other revenue includes some small transfers we have from other funds, interest and several other miscellaneous revenues that represent 1.8% of our $413 million total. As we look at expenditures, I'll just kind of run through these pretty quickly. Again, this is in the big picture, $1.1 billion budget. Personal services are the largest percent at 40.8%. And you can see our debt service at 8.1%. That's again, on our general obligation bonds. As we move into the operating budget, you can see personal services becomes a much bigger piece of the, of the total. Again, this is where we're funding our operations and operations takes people to do. Back in fiscal year 11, council passed a resolution stating its intent to keep personal services cost growth below revenue growth. Specifically, the resolution sought to keep personal services growth in the operating funds, which is the piece you're seeing here on this pie chart, below the average rate of revenue growth over the last five years in the general fund. And for FY15, the five-year average revenue growth in the general fund has been 3.1%. And the percentage growth that we have budgeted right now for personal service growth is 2.1%. So the proposed budget does meet that intent of the resolution to control personal service cost, cost growth and keep that below our average revenue growth. As we turn to the general fund, again, personal services are about 72.9% of the total. Other services at 20.6% includes utilities, contracts for service, but also things like our payments for COTPA service and chargeback for internal service funds like IT, fleet, risk management and the print shop. risk management, and the print shop. You'll notice on this that capital is almost, it's just barely over zero. In the general fund, we budget a transfer to our Capital Improvement Projects Fund of $5.25 million for this coming year, and the Capital Improvement Project Fund is where those capital investments take place. So part of that transfer's total includes $5.25 million that gets transferred to the CIP Fund for capital there. If we look at the general fund by service area, public safety is the majority of our expenses at 63.9%. General government comes in at just under 9, and that's because all of our general government functions are located within the general fund. Public services are the second-largest category at 17.6%, includes public works, development services, and planning. And then finally, culture and recreation in the general fund is made up of the Parks and Recreation Department and the cost for operating at Cox Convention Center and Chesapeake Arena. When we look at our position changes within the budget, this is again, across all funds, not just the general fund, but all funds. We show an increase of 80 positions, that's about 1.7% to a total of 4,660. Of those additions, 35 are police or fire, 11 are for vacant abandoned buildings program, 10 are in utilities, 9 in parks and recreation. And just to kind of put things in perspective, from our low point there in recent years at 2011, this is an increase of 334 positions. Of that total, 112 are uniform police officers, 35 are uniform firefighters, an additional 19 are civilian positions in police and fire. So that's 166 positions that are police and fire that have been added since 2011. Other areas that have seen significant increases include 36 more positions in utilities, 26 in public works, and 24 in the Development Services Department. We talked a little bit about the, the GFOA award earlier this morning, but we also follow, of course, Oklahoma State Law and the Municipal Budget Act, and we'll kind of talk a little bit about that again later on, but just wanted to tell you the standards that we're following. What I might do for just a moment is have you flip through the budget book just to kind of familiarize yourself with, with some of the pieces that are in there. If we just kind of follow the tabs that are there on the book. The introduction, of course, has the transmittal letter from the city manager, goes over council priorities and some basic information about the city and our budget process. The financial summary section, the next tab, contains an overview of revenue and expenses and a summary of our five-year forecast from the workshop. I might direct your attention to page 64. 64 has a nice chart on it that shows positions by all of our departments, how they've changed over the last, well, the last, this year, the prior year, and what we have proposed for next year, and you can see the additions as we go through there. One thing you'll note there, for example, on police, if you go down there, police shows an increase of 29, but we also show a minus one in the police grants fund. One position that had been funded from grants is now funded in the police department, so the net is overall an increase of 28 there. If we flip back to the next tab, the departmental budgets, this is, again, alphabetically, we've got all of our departments there. And maybe we'll turn to airports on page 79. You can see we've got a kind of an organizational chart by lines of business and program, as well as the department mission. The next several pages, the departments identified the issues that they're facing over the next several years, as well as the strategies they're employing to address those issues and the results they're expecting. Each department section will have a little, a major budget changes summary. You can see for airports, on page 84, they have very, they basically had no major budget changes in fiscal year 15. On page 85, we've got a summary of their expenditure budget, both by, organized by the line of business or their purpose, as well as their funding source. For airports, they just have the airports cash fund, but some of the other departments, you'll see multiple funds supporting their operations and capital. And then the next page, 86, has the number of positions in each of those divisions, as well as the positions by their funding source. And then finally, the next several pages under airports goes through each line of business, or you may hear them referred to as division within the department, looking at their programs, their performance, budget, and positions within each of those lines of business. If we flip on to the next tab, the fund summary section, this is technically the part that gets adopted. The resolution that will come before you in June is this, basically, the tables out of this fund summary section. This is what's required by the Municipal Budget Act, by state law, that we must identify every fund, its revenues and expenses, and those expenses need to be organized by department and then budget category. So you've often, you've seen those on the pie charts, personal services, other services and charges, supplies, transfers, those sorts of things. The capital section is the next section of the budget. This is really, again, more for informational purposes here. What we've got here is a list of all the expected capital projects we anticipate spending money on next year, and what we, we give a little information about the project, as well as how much is expected to be spent on the project next year. So again, in the FY15 budget. And then for our appendix, we've got our financial policies, our table of compliance with those policies, demonstrating how we're doing against those policies, and a glossary of terms that we use throughout the budget. So Derek, if you want to hit the next slide, then we've got our schedule coming up. The next several weeks, we'll be having presentations by departments every other week, as you meet as the finance committee. Next week is IT, police, and fire. We'll be presenting the budget for adoption on June 10th to take effect on July 1st. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Doug, a quick question on the revenue increase we had this year. 14, 15 over 14. How does that compare to the budget increase?
What, so...
We have a budget of $1.1 billion.
Right.
And how much did our revenue increase percentage-wise, as opposed to that percentage increase in budget?
Well, the revenues would set the, the cap on, on how much we can increase our budget. So what we anticipated as revenues, you know, from that, basically, we had a $1 billion budget when we started FY14, and we're going to 1.1 billion. That's about a 10% increase. What changes that, or what factors into that, again, is that fund balance in places like the MAPS III sales tax, is really revenue from prior years that's been saved up and being used now. And that sort of distorts the percentages and makes the percentages look higher. I think if you look at the general fund, where we're up about 3%, that gives you probably a more realistic impression of what our revenues are increasing. About 3% is what we're... Revenues from the general fund are going up about 3%? That, that 3%. Right. That's correct, sir.
Just really a comment on Larry's comment, and I appreciate the question about what it would take to, to obtain another 12 police officers. You know, I look at things probably too simple at times. You know, if we could get another superstore like a Target or a Walmart that generates $100 million, that's going to generate $4 million, over $4 million a year to us in sales tax revenue. And to me, and that would provide for another 60 police officers for, in that particular event.
2% for the general fund.
Okay. Well, the point is, but still a 4% for total, isn't our sales tax here in the city 4?
3.85.
Okay.
But, but 2% to the general fund, 1% for MAPS III, 3/4% for, for the public safety, and 1/8% to the zoo.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. Well, let me modify that a little bit. So instead of 60 police officers, yeah, instead of 60 police officers with a new supercenter that's located, say, on Western Avenue on 149th, instead of along Santa Fe and more, and the point is, I would give an incentive of some amount, let's say a million, to get that 2 million or 3.8 million annual annuity, in a sense, by having that store locate within our city limits. I'm just making a point. Maybe we ought to look at some of the incentives, especially in regards to retail, to be able to accomplish some of the goals that we individually or collectively may have with respect to the city. I think it can be achieved, and sometimes it's just a matter of putting a dollar amount to a particular example, hopefully to make it a little bit clearer.
One of the difficulties we have, David, is trying to estimate how much of that revenue is cannibalized from some existing customers. And so if it's not a net increase, we'd have to be careful about that.
No, I understand that concept very well. I'm sorry, and I'm not minimizing that it's an important issue, but if, I'm sorry. But if a particular store is looking close to the border of the city, and it's a question of, do they stay within the city limits or go into another municipality? If we can convince them through some type of incentive or some other inducement to come in here, you know, we're talking in terms of annuities, the way I look at it.
Are you familiar with the Outlet Mall project?
Yes.
We did exactly what you're suggesting there. We had a competitor just across, down the road a little ways wanting to move there. We made some incentives, concessions to them, and it was very, been very successful so far.
Oh, no. And I'm not suggesting we've not ever thought about doing this. I'm just saying, this is why I think incentives can be important in regards to retail. And for me, to make things simpler, if we start putting dollar amounts to certain types of, of retail activity, we can see the benefits that the city and the citizens will obtain if we are successful in those efforts. That's my only point.
All right. Anybody else want to comment on the budget? All right, we'll have plenty of opportunities, obviously. Doug, thank you and your staff for all the work that went into this. We appreciate it very much. We'll look through it, and I'm sure I'll have some questions down the line. Thank you all. We do not have executive session today, so we are adjourned.